The commission meeting for August 21st, 2012 to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and then the pledge led by Denny Garden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we will review and approve the agenda. Are there any items on the agenda that anyone wishes to remove? Or are there any changes that you wish to make? There are no changes to the agenda. We would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So move, Mr. Chair. Motion?
Second.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we go to the consent agenda and Holly Henness will read the consent agenda into the record.
Good morning, commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today I have placed the following items for your consideration on the consent calendar. The minutes of the regular meeting from August 7th, 2012. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $3,57,317.14. Approval of the resolution of the Pennington County Commission nominating the Pennington County Mountain Pine Beetle Suppression Project for the 2012 Achievement Award. To appoint Mr. Nick Herricks to fill a vacancy on the Board of Directors for the Rapid Valley Rural Fire Protection District. To request for approval to cancel the special commission meeting that we have scheduled on September 18th for voucher approval only, meaning that we will approve the vouchers three days later at our regular meeting on September 21st. We have a lien release request with approval recommended from Health and Human Services. We have an approval of an adopt a highway program application for a two-mile stretch of Nameless Cave Road by the National American University online campus. Recognition of volunteers for the months of July 2012. And finally, a request to surplus an ATV trailer for the purposes of trade from the weed and pest department.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any of the consent agenda items from that agenda? Anyone from the commission or the public? Hearing no requests, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve items five through 13 on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we move to item 14. We have Mr. Tim Cobus here to address the commission.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for appointing Nick Herricks to the Valley Fire Protection District Board. We've been operating a person short there. It'll be nice to be fully staffed there. This morning, I come before you to ask for a letter of support for a loan application for rural development loan from the USDA. The Rapid Valley Fire Department, I'll be brief here. We built the new building approximately 20 years ago. And over the last few years, we've noticed some problems with the building. And we decided to hire an architectural firm this last year who came in and did a pretty comprehensive study of our existing building for us. And came to the conclusion that for about $800,000, they could bring the building up to today's standards, but that wouldn't fix all of our problems. So they recommended that we put our time and effort into building a new station. So the district board hired an architectural firm, Chamberlain Architects. And then we proceeded to go search for funding. And Chamberlain actually suggested that we go to the USDA and apply for a rural development loan, which we've done. And we went to the Black Hills Council of Local Governments, who have been a godsend to us. They've actually shepherded us through this process. And if it wasn't for them and their efforts, we probably would have shelved the idea months ago. But anyway, we're to the point today where they are recommending that we solicit letters of support, local letters of support. And so I come before you today asking for a letter for support for the loan application for to construct a newer Rapid Valley Fire Station. I have some questions I can answer more than half.
Any questions by the commission? Mr. Chair? Commissioner Holloway.
Is the loan for the full amount?
The loan application is actually, they're recommending that we apply for more than we need, and then we'll use what we need. The loan amount is, what they're recommending is $3 million. We don't anticipate even coming close to that. We're more in the area of $2 million, what the architect has told us now. So then use, we just won't use it, and it won't be applied to our loan, the way it's discussed to me, so.
And this loan will be repaid through your current levy?
Correct, yes. Over 40 years, it'll be repaid. It is a loan, it's not a grant, so we intend to repay it.
And the interest rate will be?
The interest rate, you know, it's variable right now, and it won't be set until we actually get locked in. And right now, we're still in the grant application period, but they're telling us 3%, 4% right now is what it is, so.
You say the other building was built 20 years ago.
Yes.
And it's outlived its...
It's, yes, it's a very large pole building, built on five foot of fill, and with no engineering done to, you know, during the construction, so it has issues.
What's the issues with it?
The biggest issue is we have some major structural damage. We actually have some of the trusses that are cracked sufficiently that the architect is saying if we get a heavy snow load, we could be on the news. The building's settling, we have doors that won't close, cracks in the concrete, water actually runs towards the building instead of away from it in different locations, so.
So do you have a reserve in your, from your levy currently?
Yes, we do.
And the amount that you've been putting in the reserve will be sufficient to make this payment?
Yes.
Does the county have any liability as it relates to this loan?
Shouldn't, no. This'll all be through the Rapid Valley Fire Protection District. I suppose if they go belly up, then you might, but we don't anticipate that happening, so.
Okay. Well, I guess one other thing as it relates to that, if the city annexes more of that area out there, then do you lose some of your levy?
We do lose the levy. However, the state, there is a state law that says that the city will pick up the liability of all indebtedness of the county or of the Fire Protection District for that area that they annex. So we'll still continue to receive revenues off that, even though it's annexed into the city, as long as the liability is in place, from what I understand.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the audience?
I have one.
Yes?
Let me run this by anybody at a district meeting or anything, or is this just a board of directors?
This project was actually started last year, in 2011. That's when the study was done, in May 2011. We have had one annual meeting since, the spring of this year. It was discussed at that meeting, and there was no objections to it at that time.
Thank you.
Anything further? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we submit a letter of support to the Rapid Valley Fire Protection District for their new building, for the loan for their new building.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One no? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 15, the Rapid City Public Library Liaison Update. Is Dr. Cole here?
Good morning. I'm Dr. Cole, the county liaison for the Rapid City Public Library, and I'm here to present the use statistics for county residents. So you have before you a summary of the use by, these are Pennington County residents that are not Rapid City residents, and it's for the second quarter of 2012. The table at the top there is the summary, and you can see compared to second quarter of 2011, there has been a 15% increase in the number of residents using the library If there are still new patrons being added every quarter, although there were just a few, 3% fewer added this quarter compared to 2011, but still there's an increase. And then if you look at the volume of library materials used by the patrons, you can see that that has increased 28%. So it's increasing, at least for this quarter, twice as fast as the number of new patrons. And that's a general trend at the library overall. If you look at the overall library statistics, the first half of 2012, if you look at the digital media that was checked out, that's eBooks and such, we had already exceeded the volume of eBooks checked out for the entire year 2011. So we're on track to have, you know, 100% increase in usage over last year. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments?
I do have just a couple of questions. I sometimes just kind of need my memory refreshed. I was trying to remember how they track the county residents. Do they have something on their card information that says there from the county? I was trying to remember how we did that.
You know, I don't know exactly how they track it. I'm a county resident, not Rapid City, and my card looks the same as the others. I mean, but it's all electronic. Rod is here, do you know the answer to that, Rod?
I don't know.
Yeah. I was trying to remember that the other day, just because, oh, you know, sometimes it's good to kind of refresh your memory about that.
You know, it's all electronic. If you want to go online and see what books you've checked out in the past and all that, you can do that all on in your account. So I imagine it's pretty easy electronically to separate out, and, you know, they can keep track of the media that's checked out and the use statistics and all of that.
Okay.
I can find out for sure, if you'd like, for next time.
Yeah, because I didn't know. There is a reason. I have had some feedback that people from Mead County are part of that, because they are out of city limits. And I was under, I just want to verify that it's not just out of city limits. It truly is out of city limits, but in Pennington County.
That's my understanding. I thought if there were any other users, they would be, they're required to pay a user fee.
I heard something about that, and I wanted to verify that.
I will check on that for you. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 16, which is the Crisis Care Center update and a request for a reserve supplement.
Thank you. I'm Alan Solano, CEO of Behavior Management Systems, and we're, I guess, the managing organization for the Rapid City Crisis Care Center. The Crisis Care Center is the result of the Black Hills Mental Health Substance Abuse Collaborative, which I'm sure most of you are aware of, that came together, it consists of over 40 organizations, state, local agencies, government entities, that are trying to address the mental health substance abuse needs in our community. We formed the Rapid City Crisis Care Center back in January 2011. And so we've just completed our first full fiscal year, which I'll under-report on, and ultimately asked for some subsidy for unfunded services. There's a handout that you've all received, and I'll quite brief on this, so that there's time for questions. But the collaborative objectives really was to reduce the admissions of what we'd call inappropriate admissions to inpatient hospital, hospitalizations, the jail, and the detox. You may not know, but from 2001 through 2010, mental health petitions in Pennington County had been increasing an average of 7.16% per year. So we're seeing a large escalation in the number of involuntary commitments. What we also found is that the stats as of 2008 were showing that about 62% of those people that were being held on a petition, that that was being dropped within less than 24 hours of their stay. So those are the, what we're targeting as the inappropriate admissions for inpatient hospitalization. I'm happy to report that as of, currently, we're running between 35 and 40%. So we have significantly reduced the numbers of less than 24-hour holds. We're also looking to improve the after-crisis follow-up care in the community. Typically, it can take two to three, four weeks at times, to get a person into mental health or substance abuse services following a crisis. We've partnered with Catholic Social Services, Lutheran Social Services, Youth Family Services, Cinecount alcohol and drug and BMS, to each take a day a week where we allow immediate access into our programs. Working on improving service integration and then the awareness about the program. If we look more at what the stats have been from July 1 through June 30, we had 877 admissions into the Crisis Care Center. Again, our goal is to divert people from having to receive an inappropriate higher level of care. And you can see from the statistics that we had 485 diversions from inpatient hospital admission, 255 from going into the emergency department, diverted 35 admissions from the detox program, and diverted seven arrests and placement in Pennington County Jail. Well, we want to talk some dollars and cents to this. The next slide will show that. It's estimated that a diversion from inpatient hospitalization saves about $1,000. You should note that this does not include staff costs, such as the Board of Mental Illness Chair, the cost of the hearing, the cost of the State's Attorney Office to process these. Based on the 485 diversions from inpatient, we estimate that we had a savings of $485,000 in this fiscal year. Now, there's a lot, we go after a lot of different types of funding sources to cover the costs of the program. But the county should note that 44% of the people that were served at the Crisis Care Center had no third-party means of payment. In other words, they weren't covered by insurance, they weren't covered by Medicare or Medicaid or some other program that was out there. And those ultimately, if they end up in inpatient or in, through a petition and involuntary commitment, ultimately end up being the county's responsibility to pay. So as I said, we've used the other funding sources, Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance. We've gotten significant private donations for the first three years of the program. And so, in a sense, we're really looking to use Pennington County as a payer of last resort with this program. And so what we're requesting is that we ended up with a year of just over $28,000 in unfunded services in the Crisis Care Center. And so I'm requesting that Pennington County fund those unfunded services, using a portion of the money that was set aside as part of helping to fund services through the Crisis Care Center. And with that, I'd be happy to stand by for questions. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Good report.
Thank you.
And to address this issue, if the commission chooses, we make a motion to schedule a budget supplement hearing for this obligation.
That would be my motion.
I'll second it.
And you'll word that, I mean, it comes from the reserves.
Yeah.
Okay. And where will that, where will we, what budget will we be supplementing?
Crisis care.
Well, do we have a...
I've got some serious questions. Okay. Some serious questions. We keep saving her.
Okay.
We keep giving money.
Is the secretary satisfied with the motion? Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Troutman seconded the motion. Any further discussion? So we're going to determine what fund and what date. Did we set a date for the...
September 4.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, item 17, a request to assume responsibility of a traffic signal at Liberty Boulevard and Tower Road. Mr. McMahon.
Good morning, commissioners. Mike McMahon from the City of Box Elder. We have just opened up a new street in Box Elder, Tower Road, to connect to the Centennial Housing Area on the base. This is changing our traffic patterns within our city, and it's time to activate the traffic signal that the county has been responsible for at the corner of Tower Road and Liberty Boulevard. Since we're requesting that that signal be put back into, or put into service for the first time, we think we should probably assume responsibility for the operation of the traffic light. So since we took over maintenance responsibility on Liberty Boulevard from the west end up to that intersection, we're ready to take on the responsibility for the signals at this point, and request that you grant us that.
Heine, do you have any comments?
Yes, this signal was put in when Liberty Boulevard was constructed about eight years ago for anticipation that we would have more traffic at this intersection. Mike is right when he says the entire intersection in Liberty Boulevard is all within the Box Elder city limits. And if they want to activate it and utilize it, I guess a motion by the board, given them jurisdiction and responsibility for that traffic light at that intersection, would be appropriate. And I would support a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Question for Heine. Should we give them the lights as well, so that if it breaks, then they fix it or they can replace it?
Well, they're going to have to do some repair anyway. One of the heads got hit here about five years ago, and we removed it and have it in storage, so they're going to have to put that back up. But it's my understanding that the poles and the lights and the controller, anything associated with that traffic light will be, come under the jurisdiction of Box Elder and be their responsibility.
So we give them, I mean, we should, our motion should be not only just to let them assume responsibility for it, but just give them the light and all of the structure that goes with the light?
Yes, yeah.
That would be my motion then, if there's no more further. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, do we need to have some kind of a written piece of paper that does this?
I guess I'd refer that to our attorneys, if there's one here. If they feel that we should do a written agreement, I guess that way it'd be in writing. Well, it will be in writing, and it'd be motion in the county commissioners' minutes, but do you think...
That's enough for us.
That'd be enough for...
All right, just as long as that's...
That's official, and that'd be official record.
I think the question that comes to my mind is the legality of transferring property. And if the commission agrees, we could defer this item until an attorney is present before we actually make a motion. Is that permissible?
We have the right to transfer, I know under, I'm not an attorney, but I know that we have the right to transfer property from one entity to another without declaring it surplus, or, so there is that allowance in the law to do that, so.
Okay, let's just word the motion properly and take care of it now. So Commissioner Holloway, you are charged with providing the wording.
There's your attorneys.
Okay.
We have a question, Jay. Liberty Boulevard was constructed by the county about eight years ago. We installed a traffic signal light with a controller at Tower Road and Liberty Boulevard intersection. It's now been a next into the city of Box Elder, and Box Elder's requesting jurisdiction and maintenance and anything to do with that traffic light to be under Box Elder. Do we need a formal written agreement or something in the commission minutes would be enough of a written record to transfer the property? Because it was purchased with county funding, and now we're donating it to the city.
Oh, we could, you could do it either way, but I think maybe the most thorough or complete way is to have some kind of agreement and understanding. When you say you purchased it, you purchased the dirt or you purchased the structures that went in the intersection?
We purchased the light, the light poles and the arms and the heads and the controller box to control it. That was all purchased under contract utilizing federal funds, so. And when we, yeah, you're probably right, an agreement might be better because federal funds were involved, and when we spend federal funds, the county's obligated to maintain all the improvements, so.
I don't think it would have to be some massive document. I think something fairly quick and simple, just transferring the ownership and the maintenance obligation henceforth would be sufficient.
So if the motion indicated that proper paperwork be prepared to authorize it?
Okay, that's fine with me.
I guess I know they're wanting to do it as soon as possible, so I guess with our motion, that the agreements would be the formality to have signatures on, so.
Would it be okay with the commission that authority be given to Heine to sign that agreement, whatever, to transfer that? Or do you want to come back in two weeks and do it? I'm just suggesting that we get it done sooner.
Why can't a document be put together by you and Heine and referred back to the office for the chair's signature?
That's fine as well, sure.
That'll work if, yeah.
That was all in my motion.
And that was all in my second.
I'll, I'll help you draft, or if you've got a...
I'll finish it.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll help you with it. Thank you.
Mike?
And we're fine with that, as long as you don't mind us operating the signal before school starts.
Oh, sure.
Long as you take care of the liability.
Yeah, and we've...
Would you say that again, real loud?
We will accept the responsibility for the electric bills.
And any liability that comes from there, if ever, okay.
I think, I think we'd probably get that drafted. I don't know when school starts, but...
Next week.
Oh, next week.
Well, we didn't have two classes.
Try to get it done as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you comfortable with the motion, Karen? We have a motion and a second. Anyone have any questions or comments regarding the motion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item is item 18, a request for additional support staff. Mr. Donald Humes. Morning.
I wanted to give this to you just to help clear...
We already have that.
Yes.
Different order?
Very slightly amended. The numbers are all the same. The numbers are all the same, but there was, it rocked my attention yesterday, there may be some confusion in some of the wording. Four or five words on the back page, so this is just a fair... Very, very slight wording, doesn't change anything. As I said earlier, good morning, Commissioners. I, I have a, after listening to some of the problems here, I have a very simple problem compared to what you guys are used to. My business is very good, and I need your help to help it. I own America's Mailbox. We're located in Box Elder, between the Flying J and the Motive Parts. We're the ones that fly the really big flag out there, which, let me go on record, that is available to anybody that wants to use it for any reason, you know, fire department, police department, sheriff, et cetera. The problem that I'm having is, we're growing very well, which is not a bad thing. The problem is compounded that because we grow very well, is that it's taking us a very, very long time to get our vehicles for our customers through the vehicle registration process at the county treasurer's office. Kind of give you a rough idea here, you know, within the last year, we signed up six hundred and seventy-two new accounts. We grow at an annual percentage rate of about twenty percent every year, despite the economy. This, you know, just the six hundred and seventy-two accounts is costing us nearly seven hundred and eighty hours, just this one year alone, just for those six hundred and ninety-two accounts. We have thousands of customers. We also do vehicle renewals for our customers, and that takes about four and a half minutes per renewal, and that added is another additional six hundred and fifty-five, six hundred and fifty-six hours. Further, you know, the total count, you know, hours at the county here, we're looking at around six hundred and, sixteen hundred and forty-three hours. Now, we've been asked by Janet not to, if we can, you know, to try to avoid bringing any of our work down on Monday and Fridays, because it's too much of a workload for them to handle. And in fact, Janet even called, you know, called me up a couple of weeks ago and asked me for a favor, and that is, you know, was, please don't bring any work down to us tomorrow, because we can't handle your workload. We, we're growing very well, as I said. We, well, we came to a, you know, kind of a thing that, you know, three days a week, just the workload we have right now, it would take about ten and a half hours a day to be able to do this. The vehicle registrations, renewal, title transfers, and so on. As the county treasurer's office season didn't even open that many hours, we're forced to come in occasionally on Mondays and Fridays, which is, as I stated a moment earlier, Janet has asked us not to do this, whenever we can, not as a policy, but as a rule, kind of thing, to kind of help them out. Going down this here, you know, I also might want to remind the Commissioners, this is actual work time, and this doesn't even take into consideration the hours that's spent standing in line. The numbers that I'm stating to you is based on history. Now, we are projected to grow approximately double in our size within the next twelve months, because of some new marketing strategies that I'm using. I'm in negotiation to purchase two other mail forwarding companies here in South Dakota. I'll be bringing their business in here, and a marketing strategy that I'm gonna be employing within the next six months alone, I'm anticipating will bring in about a thousand new accounts. This is becoming a serious problem, folks. We already spend a great deal of time down there. And when I, I had a meeting with Janet, and I asked her, because I always have a solution to a problem, I asked her, I says, you know, would it be possible if we can simply drop off the work that we have, and it would be done throughout the day at their convenience, when they have their moments of, where they're not quite as busy, and we would simply pick them up the next day and drop off the next day batch? And that's when Janet suggested I arrange to get on the agenda and appear before you folks. So, that's what I'm doing. The problem that we have, it's not gonna go away. The problem is not gonna get any better. It's only gonna get much more worse. We are growing, and we are growing quite well, and I would hope that the Commissioners would agree with me when I say that I don't think I should, you know, be basing the success of my company on the ability or the inability of the county treasurer's office to be able to handle our workload. So, what I'm asking is possibly two things, easy solutions. One is allow my company to drop our work off, instead of, you know, coming in there, waiting line, taking the entire day, and, you know, during a time when the commissioners' off, when the, I'm sorry, when the treasurer's office may be very busy doing other things. Or second is allow the treasurer's office to hire somebody. They're, you know, in my opinion, they're obviously short-staffed. They do many, many other things, as you know, besides vehicle registrations, but it's becoming a serious, serious bottleneck. My preference is to be able to drop things off. I've already worked through the logistics. I've already, you know, come up with the, the obvious couple little snags along the way, and I've already come up with solutions with that, which I, you know, is easily worked out with Janet. Very easy. That would be my best solution. So, that's all I wanted to say, is that, you know, please consider allowing my company to be able to drop things off. It would make life a lot easier for everybody. The treasurer's office would be able to handle it in a more timely manner, and my company can continue to grow, which is a good thing, especially in today's economy.
As Chair, I'm going to ask the Commission not to ask you questions at this point. I'd like to hear from Janet Saylor, and then...
Janet here?
If she's here. We'll listen to Janet, and then any, anyone else before we explore this issue?
Good morning. The bottom line here is, this isn't just about America's Mailbox. This is a much larger problem than that. We have other companies from out of state that are sending in their titles for people, for us to renew, transfer the titles. Our business has grown according to the, the state, eleven percent within a two-year period. There's also a twenty percent increase in license fees, which the state has told me can be attributed to the increase as well as growth in Pennington County. We've had a fourteen percent increase in excise tax in the state of South Dakota, just in the last year and a half. It's not only my office that's being impacted by this, it is also the state, and they're looking at possible solutions, because they can't keep up on their work either. For, for Mr. Hume to come in and say he wants me to dedicate one employee, and he wants to be allowed to drop off his stuff, I, I did tell him I do not have the staff to do that. However, if I start letting him drop off his, his stuff, what about the rest of the taxpayers in Pennington County? My feeling is I represent every taxpayer in this county, and I need to be fair to all of them. As far as him saying that he would drop it off and pick it up the next day, with the mail that comes in, on a daily basis, it's all lined up as to how it comes into our office. If the titles come in, everything that comes in yesterday goes to the front, everything that comes in today goes to the back, and that's how they're processed. For him to bring it in and drop it off every day, we're putting his work ahead of the rest of the people that need work done in Pennington County. While I'm not opposed to trying something new, I need to listen to his proposal, because the stuff that comes up now does have problems with it. Once we put something into the computer, if we're short fees, we don't have a signature, we need a damage disclosure, all that stuff has to be deleted out of the computer, and when it comes back the next day, it has to be put in once again. So, in essence, we're doing the work twice. That's, that becomes the same problem when people are mailing stuff in from out of state that we get every day. He's correct. We can't keep up with the work and the increase that he's bringing to Pennington County with the staff that we have right now. It's just not possible. But it's also not feasible for us to put on an employee to just work for one person. We have to serve all the taxpayers in Pennington County, and everybody needs to be treated equally.
Thank you, Janet. Heinie, do you have any comments?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay. Julie?
I don't know if you all know what America Way is, but it's a...
America's Mailbox.
Pardon me?
America's Mailbox.
America's Mailbox. They're on America's Way. That's how we know them in voters. Since the, since it's very easy to become a resident of South Dakota, you license your vehicle here, we, we collect your motor vehicle fees through Janet's office. One of those also requirements that they have is that you register to vote and get a South Dakota's driver's license. Those are permanent RVers, or the, they also have it for truckers, people that don't, that are out of town a lot, use this kind of service. We have a precinct just for America's Way addresses. There's twelve hundred and twenty-four as of today in that. So, we get a lot of reg, we get almost everyone that's out there that applies for a mailbox, is given a voter registration form, we have them pre-propulated. All they have to do is fill in their name, and they're, they're very accommodating on that. But as theirs increases, it affects everything within the county that they have a right by federal law to be able to register to vote here. So, there's, as well as license their vehicles, according, if they have a Pennington County address, which they do, license plates. There are only a few places in South Dakota that kind of have, that these permanent RVers, we call them, have merged into, and I'm sure that's some of the processes that, that he's looking at buying. We can't charge for our service, we just simply have to, have to provide it. And they are avid voters, but mostly only in general elections. So, as they grow, so does the input need, because it's so much more time-consuming to do an absentee ballot, especially by mail, than it is to have someone come to the counter and vote. We don't even set up a precinct board separate for them, because their people aren't here. So, it's, it's an issue that's created, but we also get a lot of highway dollars. It just is sad that those highway dollars cannot be diverted into the other offices as well as, that provide services for this. We've, we've managed to keep up. We don't show the number of registered voters, that he's showing is increasing, we haven't, our, our voter registration hasn't doubled, so I'm not sure where that lag is coming in, but if he's projecting that type of a growth, we will definitely see it in elections also. So, this type of service and providing a income tax-free state is really, and low motor V fees is really what's, what's driving their ability to use South Dakota for that. But I agree, they don't get any more special service in our department than, than they should in Janet's. Our service is free, I don't know if they charge for the, doing the license plate renewals. Yes, they, they charge to do that for them.
Thank you.
May I add something? I would agree with Janet in saying that my company should not be treated any differently than the private citizens of Pennington County. But the fact is, is I am one of the biggest customers of this service, and we either have now, or will soon have, enough work to keep a person within Pennington County Treasurer's Office busy. So, you know, by, you know, by saying, you know, I wouldn't be treating, you know, it wouldn't be treated fairly, kind of a thing, I would disagree on that one point, because we, we bring in enough work now, or like I said, or soon will be enough to keep one person busy. But Janet did say the point, the truth is, is she is understaffed. She really does need help, and I'm trying to come up with the two solutions. Either A, you know, either A or B, or even A and B. A, allow us to drop off the paperwork, and/or B, allow Janet to hire more staff. She really does need help there.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Janet. Is there a way, when he does these renewals, that he can use the ATM, the machine over in?
Yes, he would have to pay two dollars per renewal.
Or they could do it online.
And that's a dollar mailing and a dollar for the use of the online service, so it's two dollars there, too.
And we do thousands.
However, that would help you with some of your issues, to do some electronic...
Ideally, it'd be nice if I could do the work within our own office, but I understand I'm not, I don't have access to the state computer, because as Janet would say, a lot of the time is spent in doing the input into the computers. I would love it if we can do the input on the computers right in our office, but that...
But you could do renewals online.
At a cost.
And you could do renewals over there, but, but you've talked about the cost of having people stand in line. It might be less.
I've looked at that already.
So, you, it's less than two dollars to have somebody stand in line?
As I said, we did, we do thousands.
It would be two dollars per vehicle, Nancy.
I get that.
And we have, we have thousands of customers, and each one of our customers has an average of three point five or so vehicles. So, we're talking about a chunk of money.
Okay, before we get into more of a debate on this, is there any other county official that has any input on this subject?
Well, I guess I could just say that, that I don't have the total numbers, but, but if he's talking a thousand vehicles, oh, you do have total numbers now? Well, not... No, that's hours. Hours don't do me any good. I need total number of customers times the three vehicles, and then I can give you an estimate of what kind of funds you generate.
We just gave, you know, of course, there's a small attrition, but we just gave out box number four thousand three hundred and fifty.
So, you got four thousand three fifty customers?
Accounts.
Oh, okay.
Accounts, and each one will have an average of three point five.
Yeah, see, and then I, if I would've had that, I could've done the math, but we get, we retain twenty, I think twenty-two percent of the, of the fees, and then fifty-four is sent into the state, and then fourteen percent is, is kept for township, so there's some dollars involved, and their auditor and treasurer's right, it's highway fund, so it goes to the highway, but I do get about one point two million in support out of the general fund for highway. So, you could ship some of that, based on the additional revenue, you could shift a little bit of that from the highway department, general fund support into the treasurer's office, if you were looking at additional employees, which would be a real easy thing to do. But otherwise, it will generate revenue, you know, and it's hard to, if we look at a, at four thousand vehicles, average two thousand or two hundred dollars a vehicle, multiply that out, take twenty-two percent, and that's what the funds are actually staying in the county, so I wish I would've had those numbers. I could've had more information for you, but it could, eleven percent increase that the state's talking about is about seven hundred thousand a year, but then you have to split it out. Fifty-four percent goes to the state, which gets dispersed back to all, all the counties, sixty-six counties. Twenty-two percent stays within the county, and then fourteen percent goes back to the counties for the, for the organized township, so.
I would add that that forty-three thousand fifty number is today. We grow at a rate of about a hundred and twenty percent a year, and that does not take into account the, the two mail firms that I'm negotiating to purchase, as well as the different marketing strategies that will bring about another thousand or so within the next few months. So, that is as of today. This problem's going to get much larger. It's gonna, it's gonna mushroom.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My feeling is that it looks like the treasurer's office needs another employee. I think that's our responsibility, whether to allow her another respons, another employee or not. I don't think it's our responsibility, or do we want to get involved in telling her how to run her office? That's up to her, she's an elected official. So, I don't have a problem giving her another employee, and she can figure out how she wants to run her office.
Maybe three?
Any other comments? Janet?
Who said three?
Me. Maybe four?
No. At, at this point, if the Commissioners could allow me another employee for the rest of this year, and I'm gonna tell you it's not in the budget, and add one to the budget for next... and add one to the budget for next year, I will not come to the commission and ask for two employees or four employees. I want to see what happens here. I want to see if the increase comes in. And it would not be physically responsible of me to put four people on and charge to the taxpayers if it's not needed. So I think we just need to see what happens, put the one on, and we'll go from there. If that's the wish of the commissioners and if they agree that putting, putting more employees on, three to four more employees or even two at this point, I don't think we should do that. I think, I think one employee will help us get through this. And if his business grows and he gets the other ones purchased, then we'll look at it in the 2015 budget.
Oh, it's going to grow.
Pardon me?
It's going to grow.
But you haven't bought the businesses yet. So, I mean, it's up to the commission. If you want to put two employees on for next year and say one's open and we're not going to hire, that's up to you too. If you want me to come back and do it at that time, I'm not opposed to that. I just don't think we're being responsible to the rest of the taxpayers of Pennington County at this point by putting on two to four more employees.
I have a question for you. If, um, Mr. Hume's employee brings in an assortment of title work and all that sort of thing, and part of it is not, does not have all the required documentation that is necessary to process, what happens?
It's, um, deleted out of the system, everything we put in, and it would be sent back to him and he would have to correct it.
Have any idea what percentage of those transactions represent that kind of thing?
My opinion would be a small percentage. I have staff that do nothing but vehicle registrations. And sometimes there's a difference of opinion. And as we deal with human beings, yes, of course, you know, something is occasionally missed. But, you know, my, from my position, I, I pay people to do this. I don't like paid to pay people to make mistakes. So we keep it down to a, to an absolute minimum wherever we can. So it does happen. Is it, is it common? No.
As far as it does happen, and it usually happens every day, every time we come.
Well, think of the number we bring in.
But, but seriously, I mean, there's problems.
Looks like there's some management challenges in both places, your office and your office. And, uh, to speed the process up.
Oftentimes what happens is there's a, there's a conflict in numbers. Uh, and, you know, from the numbers we figure and sometimes the number that the staff figures. And, um, sometimes we're right, sometimes we're not. It's-
That's human.
Exactly. That's, that's precisely my point.
Okay, Heine, do you have something to add?
I was, I just crunched the numbers quick. And if he's talking 4,300 customers at three vehicles, the average per customer, that's 12,900 vehicles times $200 on the average, which that might be low. And 22% is retained by Pennington County. That generates 567,600.
And of those 4,000, how many currently exist?
I have about a 5% attrition rate. So it's really, it, it's really not that much difference. And again, those numbers are today. We grow every ti-- every day.
Okay. Because that's based today, so we're already getting that in the budget.
Yes, we're already at that point.
It's not what the new-
Correct. And as I said, we grow every year about 120%.
If I used the 600 and some customers, I think the other day when I run the numbers, it was 100 and, 100 and some thousand is what the 11, the 600 new customers would, would generate. So if you're looking at added employee, you're all, you're, just new customers, you're generating 100 and some thousand. So whatever the cost that employee would be, you could take it out of that. Which I say it's, it'd be real simple to do is just reduce the general fund support that goes to the highway department and give that to the treasurer's office.
Even if I don't end up negotiating the purchase of the-
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question, please. I'd like to-
Go ahead.
Uh, Heine, I, I realize that it'd be really, really simple to transfer that money. The only problem is, is it'd be really, really simple for the legislature to say, hey, they're, they're doing exactly what we thought they were gonna do, is take money from the general fund, put it back to the general fund and do something else with it and let this new license plate money fund the highway department. So, um, I have a little problem unless the legislature is willing to come out and say that they'll allow us to do that, of taking money back and transferring it to another department. I would not like to see us lose that whole revenue source. It would be kind of a bad deal. But I, again, I add to my deal of, when Janet asked for an employee, I know she needs one. She hasn't asked for one in, I don't, since, since I've been around here and that's been a number of years. So most likely her department does need one and I'd be more than happy to go that route. I would have some statements about the rest of it a little later, but not right now. I know, thank you.
Okay, at this point, uh, okay. Unless there's something new and revealing, we'll, um, ask for public comment on this.
I would like to add, add one more fact. And that is that, uh, even if I don't end up purchasing these two other companies and even if my marketing strategy that I'm gonna put in place the next couple of months doesn't generate anything, we grow at an average of 20, 120% every year. Just that growth alone will add nearly 900 new accounts to my company, add 3.5 vehicles. And that's just for new vehicle registration. That doesn't count the renewals or the title transfers or anything else.
So will you have to add a new employee?
I already am. I just added two this week and I, and I'm interviewing another two. So I already am. I'm already gearing up for it.
Okay. Thank you. Dan, did you have something you wanted to contribute to this?
Dan Richard. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, just a personal observation. I was in last week to renew my license on my cars. There was about 30 people in line. It took almost 40 minutes for me to get up there. There was people, there were people answering the phone while 30 people are standing in line. And I don't think that's proper customer service when people are there and the, the person that's serving you is answering telephones. I don't deny that she needs more help. I'm just saying that maybe it could be a little more efficient that if a person is calling, the, the person in line should have priority over a person calling. And that's, that's all I'm saying. It took me, it took me, I don't know what they've got down here, but it took me 11 minutes just to register four vehicles. So.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Dan, I have, have a question of you. Do you have a suggestion what we do with those telephone calls?
Well, i- if, if it's that important, the guy should, the, the person on the phone should get down there to the county.
To do what?
I- i- if it's that important. If, if it's just to ask a question, we got 30 people standing in line just to ask a question. I don't know what the phone call's about. It just looks bad when you got, I don't think it's right. I think if you got a person standing in line, it's just like going down to a parts store and a guy answers the phone while you're standing at the counter. I just turn around and walk out.
But again, I asked you, do you have a solution to it?
I, I said I do not deny that they need another person. I'm not a problem with it. What I'm saying is that maybe it could be a little more efficient by not answering telephone.
But still, again, if we do have, put another person on, that person's gonna be answering telephone calls too as they come in. So that's what I'm asking, if we have a solution to the answering the telephone.
Yeah, don't answer the telephone.
Oh, so you just ignore the taxpayers that they're making phone calls?
The taxpayers are standing in line right in front of them.
Okay, we've covered this.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for Janet. Janet, how many telephone calls did you get this year?
I, I, we have a, when I got the new phone system, I bought the, the account that tells us how many phone calls we have. And there's some month, months we get 8,325. One month we got 9,705. From January 1st to July 31st, we got 62,684 phone calls. And there's no way one person can answer the phone or that my office staff can call all these people back. That's why we have to answer the phone while we're waiting on the customers.
Mr. Davis, that, that answers that question as allowing Janet to hire more staff?
Well, she hasn't asked for one yet.
Let's, um, anything else related to this subject in the way of testimony? If not, we're gonna close discussion and the commission will take action. Commissioner Holloway.
Julie, can we, if we add a person to Janet's office and we're concerned about taking, um, um, property tax dollars from Heine's budget, can we just pay that person's salary out of Heine's budget? Is there any reason we can't do it that way? To take care of those license plates?
I, I don't know how they would look at that. You're, you're just circumventing the law. You might just as well out and out pay it from the treasurer who is statutorily responsible for license plating and let DLA raise up. The legislature has been approached on several different avenues on these permanent RVers and the effect that they are having on our state. And as of yet, they haven't really agreed that there's a problem. It has, um, created in, uh, permanent RV or precincts in numerous counties across the state where these people maybe have to come in for their driver's license. I don't know. They license plate their vehicles, they do bring in all that money and they usually register to vote. Now, my registration totals don't come even close to what he's saying he has for active accounts. And that kind of concerns me, how they're maintaining that, that residency for non-payment of state income tax.
They're not.
They're not?
They, they don't have to, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
They don't have to have a South Dakota license, driver's license to register. So the ones that Julie's getting are only the ones that are getting a South Dakota driver's license. All the other out-of-state people that aren't-
They can just register their plates.
That's correct.
You can't deny that we like the money.
Money is good.
Money, money, money is good.
We can't deny that we want people who never have been in this state to vote in this state.
Well, we only got 1,224. And the Walmart parking lot is, is another large one. They're two largest absentee RVers.
Reverend Davis has the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had a contact with, um, Bob Wilcox, our executive director of the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. And he apparently went to legislative audit and asked them if, uh, this was permissible. And they apparently told him that money could be transferred from Heine's account to Janet's. But they, but again, they have not contacted the legislature that made the rule and see what, where they'd go with it. But that did come from legislative audit.
It might make the, um, legislators think more seriously about the impact it's having.
I think the technical question of where the money could come from could be dealt with, um-
In the next item.
Depending on the, the decision of the board today. And, um, if you ask each of the 105 legislators, there wouldn't be too many of them could answer you, I would guess, but, um-
And sometimes it's better to ask forgiveness than it is permission.
There you go.
We find that out in planning and zoning every day.
Okay, let's, um, let's pursue a solution or closure to this issue. Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Yes. If what we have on the, on the agenda today, is that sufficient to allow Janet to hire an employee? Or do we need to specifically add this on to the agenda for the next meeting? And ask for one?
I'm not your parliamentarian.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the item says request for additional support staff. I don't know what else we can put on it to make it any clearer.
But the only problem is it was, it was asked for by a, by a person of the public, not from the department head. So I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
I would say in my opinion, it's sufficient.
Good show, thank you.
And Janet does want additional support.
Okay. That's what I was waiting for.
My suggestion to that, if, if the motion is to prevail, is to have Janet calculate what that amount will be for the remainder of the year, including all benefits. You have it? We don't include cents. And do a contingency transfer to her budget. That way you can take care of it today. Oh, she doesn't have benefits, plus benefits.
But Julie, we don't know that, that she's gonna spend her entire budget. So wouldn't we-
That's true.
Wouldn't we want to do this, uh, transfer, um, at the end of the year like we do a lot of the other ones?
You can, you can do it that way.
And then we maybe have to transfer the 14,000 or 1,000 or maybe it's 10,000?
That does not include benefits, so it would be higher than that. But if you included that in your motion so that she knows that it's, that it's going to be funded somewhere, we kind of put a hold-on contingency fund?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think I would, I would like to wait till the end of the year too to see how it turns out and see if there's any businesses out there that would like to make a donation to the county to help speed up their business.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to allow the treasurer's office to hire one new employee for the balance of 2012 and from thereforth.
Mr. Second?
And, and to take care of the funding problem at the end of the year.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? From the public? Hearing no further comments, we will call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next item is item 19, and I think Julie is in charge.
I am. As you are aware, that, um, once we approve provisional budget, we can make changes up and through final approval, which, um, we are planning on at least, um, if not the 4th, the 21st of September, not holding any special meetings. We have completed our audit and, um, we have some recommended changes from DLA that I need, uh, motioned so that I can, um, affect them for the presentation for the, the first official hearing on September 4th. And in addition to that, um, Janet gave me the price for one FTE for an entire year that we would need to add into the budget for 2013. The changes that we need, that we're making is that, um, we have, um, we have non-general fund transfers that are being made for IT services as well as for station services by, um, internal county departments. And the way we've been handling those is it was at their direction at the beginning and they changed their minds. We would charge the expense to the originating department, which was either IT or the station. We would then bill the independent department within the county and then receipt that money in as a true revenue. We would not decrease the budget. They have now changed their minds to that we do not include it as a revenue. We include it as a negative budget, which they've always told us we cannot do. But that's what we're gonna do. So what, it will take away the revenue estimates for just internal county departments. We will still have revenues coming in from external agencies. So what we need to do is reduce those revenue charges. 40,500 for, uh, IT charges to non-general funds. And, uh, 2,400 from the station, from the sheriff's, all the sheriff's departments. So, um, what that does entail is we will then reduce their actual expenditures. So, um, the 2,400 was, and again, these are estimates because we've not ever done it this way. And, and we're going through some changes in some billing techniques in the IT department. And we're going through some changes in some billing techniques in the IT department. So, we felt that the county budget as a whole could not, could stand not making a budget reduction in various law enforcement budgets, but that the IT was one department, and they're estimating taking out $38,501 as assured charges that they will be reimbursing their budget for. Now, I'm sure you're all confused as mud, but we used to count it as a revenue, and now we're going to go into their budget and just like credit it, just like you would a credit card, or debit it, just like you would a credit card. So, the originating payer of the voucher, which is IT and station's budget, will be net of the charges that we transfer in. It's not a transfer, it's we charge back, based off of actual charges.
So, the charges, the department that is receiving the service from IT that they've been charging for?
Mm-hmm.
Their budget's not going to change?
No, because they've got that in there.
Okay.
The budget's going to change is the one that originally pays the bill that's going to outsource it.
So, is IT's budget going to go reduce then?
Thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and one dollars.
So, when that expense comes in, rather than IT paying that bill, the benefiting department's going to pay the bill?
Technically, the IT department will still pay the bill. When they bill the other department for, and that's partly what's changing, is how that's being billed, then that money just goes back into their budget. Kind of like when you wreck a car. Yeah. And we get insurance money for it, which this is a total 180, 360-degree turn on DLA's part.
What happens if we wreck a car and don't get insurance for it?
And we just pay for it. We have some that aren't insured.
You check in on that.
For collision.
Any other questions? Is there an action we need to take in relation to this?
Yes, if you would make a motion to support the reduction in revenues for non-general fund IT charges by 40,500, to change non-general station charges for 2,400, and to, that's a revenue, and to decrease the IT budget by 38,501, and to increase the treasures for one FTE by 46,211.
Is there such a motion?
That would be my motion. Clear to me.
Would you mind reciting all of that?
I've got it on a piece of paper, Don, I'm sorry.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Any comments regarding this motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, motion carried.
This way, making that motion today, I will be able to affect those changes and produce a new document for you, so you can tell more accurately where you're at for the fourth.
With this, with this change that DLA put together, though, really helps us from double budgeting.
Yes.
Where we were showing expense twice.
That's exactly what it was. Which they've supported all over. We double budget everywhere. So, we're hoping that they'll slowly let us change other ones.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission relative to the budget?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, there is a couple of questions, and I'm still back to health care and wondering how much that's going to cost us. But also, Heine, did you ever come up with an answer on what that situation was as of funding we may have to give back to the townships? I think that number that I heard one time was over 300,000.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
And I'm not sure whether that's still kosher or not, so.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but did we vote on that last motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wasn't that the motion that the?
Motion and a second, but we, yeah, that's what.
On the.
On the.
On.
On what Julie went through. The one that we can't repeat, but.
Yeah, we had a vote on it. Everybody said aye.
I'm sorry, I did not remember it, neither did.
Just to clarify, so that we don't have any memory lapses or whatever, on the previous, on the motion relative to the budget adjustments, and you have that motion?
I have the motion. I don't have a vote, but I'm.
And we had a motion by Holloway and a second by Troutman. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Any, anyone negative vote? Motion carried. Let me play back the tape. Okay, go ahead, Heine.
That issue on motor vehicle fees is going to be discussed by the attorneys in executive session with you a little later in this meeting, under that item.
Okay.
This is all I have for you right now.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns relative to the budget? Want to vote on that motion again? Okay. Items from the auditor. Number 20.
I'll just summarize the detailed letter that I sent to the board. As you're aware, we have been, I have been reserving money, and it's been supported by the board and researching new financial software for the county to purchase. After reviewing several different software vendors, taking recommendations from other entities, and looking in quite detail at the annual GFOA conference, we have decided to go with Springbrook out of Portland, Oregon. Our current KVS software is outdated, inefficient, frustrating to work with, and many steps are duplicated within the county. The IT department also has had to write several in-house programs to supplement the KVS financial system. Springbrook software comes in module form, so we can pick and choose which ones those needed, and that's what we've been doing since we got back from GFOA, is talking with the departments to see which type of modules that they would benefit from. It would include several, it would replace the old KVS system and several of the IT-written and supported programs, but most importantly, we're hoping to replace manual spreadsheets and input time, plus add new services available to the county departments. They will have access to this financial system 24/7, which it is quite limited at this time. It's a very user-friendly system. We will allow department heads and selected staff direct access to financial data. The, though the financial software is a backbone to my office duties as well, it infiltrates into the other county departments. It is used every day, I would say, by most departments. The modules we will be replacing or adding to are general ledger, accounts payable, bank reconciliation, extended budgeting and forecasting. This module has, the extended budgeting and forecasting has a module in it that allows the department heads to build their budgets within the software system, and then that information flows over to me so that, and then I can export it into an Excel spreadsheet to produce a lot of the reports that I give for you now, so that that decreases the amount for errors, it decreases the time by the department heads for having to proof my input, as well, it decreases my time on input. So, that's a benefit. It also will, once populated, will do our GASB reporting for us in much more automatic form than we're doing now, which is a plus. It will allow us to do ACHs for accounts payable and payroll. We do payroll now, we don't do accounts payable. We're implementing a purchase order system. We haven't quite decided which, what that level will be, but how this will help us is in budget projections, mostly as, I know the sheriff's office, it will reduce several of their manual reports, and all of our manual reports toward the end of the year. What the purchase order will do, when you purchase something, you will be able to put the data in once. It will, once you receive the product or the service, you will be able to commit that over to the voucher program, where we do our accounts payable and not have to re-input that information. This module also includes then that that information, once it goes through a specified by each department approval process, comes over to us, so that we don't have to re-input that information, which saves us data entry, it saves proofing time from the departments, and they'll be able to, and the report generator is much simpler, it can be arranged the way they want it, as well as they can formulate their own reports. And then what the purchase order will do is then, there will be an encumbrance column on their budget reports that they print, telling them how much that they have committed to, so they know how much they have left to spend. And then using that throughout the year, it will be a very good budget control for the department heads, and alleviate almost every department doing manual reports, especially at the end of the year. We're also looking at the online employee cell service, which means that the employee no longer has to call our office. We spent a lot of time on this. The employee calls our office, well, they lost their pay stub. Well, they want to have a copy of their W-2. They want to, they need to refinance their home, so they need their check stubs from the last six months. And this takes a lot of our personnel time in our office, and this way, they can all go online. I've talked to the department heads about this. They either can do it at their home computer, because it's using cloud, they can either do it on our third-party servicer, they can either do it on their home computer, or they can have a computer access at work to do this from, so that that, again, will save our time in doing that. We still have to do the employee verifications. There is a timesheet program included in it that will work, will replace the IT's home-written software, or in-house written software, and automatically populates, once again, through the proper channels as set up by each department, it populates into payroll, so we don't have to redo input, which is already cut down on one input on our behalf, as well as input from the department staff, as well as the proofing stage. The only thing departments will have to prove at that point is any changes that we make. We are still trying to determine whether we want the project grant accounting system. It will not, for the in-depth cost accounting systems that are being used through buildings and grounds, the project accounting, we're still verifying that, as well as the cost accounting at highway, it is not in detail enough for them to replace that, but we'll be further checking with some of our other departments, law enforcement, emergency management, to see if it can handle grants in a better, more automated way than we're doing it manually. What, one of the big things it will do for us, it'll, of course, do our fixed asset tracking in a little bit more detail than we're doing now, which helps us with our GASB reporting. But the nice thing that we love, and you should too, is we're going to be imaging our vouchers, our invoices and our vouchers, and they will image those at the department, so that when they attach the purchase order or the data input to it, it comes over to us in an electronic file, and we can get rid of one full room, if you look in our office, of files. And then the offices don't have to come over to our office and look at a voucher if they need more detail than they've copied, or some of the smaller departments don't copy their voucher invoices at all. So, we're real excited about that. It involves a miscellaneous receipt system that we can tie into a drawer, and we're only thinking of that in a very few offices, where we no longer have to purchase manual miscellaneous receipts. It will get rid of the miscellaneous receipt program, that's an in-house written one. And again, input will only happen once, and once it goes through the approval process through each department, it comes over to our office, and we'll always be able to tell what miscellaneous receipts are out there by a department. They'll be consistently numbered, so you can have a receipt in the planning and zoning office, we'll know what's out there, Janet will know what's out there, and then they send the money up. If they forget to send the money up when they've issued a county receipt, that's one numbering system now, we'll be able to call them up and say, how come we don't have a check or cash for this? So, that's a real auditing function for us that we really like. Also, we're going to buy the accounts receivable module, which each department is doing their own receipts. It's when we need to bill another entity, and basically, you're just picking an invoice off of Microsoft Office, and you're sending it out, and there's no real tracking on it unless you have many. The highway department has maybe 200 a year, but the overall county has more than that, so we think that that will be a good way. Plus, then we'll also always be able to look out there to see what is out there that is owed to Pennington County, and it will make our year-end closing much, much quicker and much more accurate. So, that's an addition, and it's a plus. Right now, if we, again, I have to contend that I haven't quite decided on the project grant accounting system yet, which that module, I believe, is 18,000. But if that's included, the cost as of now is 332,649. Maintenance fees are included through 2013, and thereafter are approximately 46,823 a year. Anybody that works with prepackaged software, the maintenance fees are what get you, and these are consistent with the market. We plan on implementing, starting in 2012, going through December 31 of 2013. Cost will be split between two budget years, 2012 and 2013, and is estimated at about 250,000, 250 dollars in 2012, 82,399 in 2013. This works perfectly into the monies that have been inside without further budget impact. There is currently 220,000 set aside in a software reserve, which we've been reserving 100,000, the rest were overcollected revenues. I have 40,870 in overcollected revenues for this year that I'd like to apply, and 2013 has 100,000 in software reserves already budgeted that I would use to support the 82,399. Of course, any remaining monies not spent in 2012 would need to be supplemented in 2013, along with the 100,000 dollar amount of that that I would need. So, I would free up some money for that. I've worked, we've had a couple of training sessions, we've had multiple conference calls with several of the other departments, we've talked to many of the department heads. I've talked about it at two department head meetings, I've talked to several of the staff members that actually be the major users of this. There is, our lien program will not transfer over, the programs that we can't transfer over because they're too integrated into other things that we do, taxes and liens. We will still use in-house programs for those, but we'll be able to import that information in, so that we don't have to duplicate the input. We can trail the liens, and that will be the same, that we'll be able to import the buildings and grounds information, as well as the highways information into the system. So, we will, again, only have input once, which will save time. We've worked quite a bit with IT. Russ has come up with several questions, helped with the decision on whether we would serve it in-house, on a server in-house, or use the cloud. He's not comfortable with using the cloud at this point with our inconsistent internet access, so we've decided to put it on a server. There's some equipment hardware that we'll need to purchase that will comply with this software. this software. So the motion needed today is to schedule a hearing for September 4th at 9:15 to supplement the auditor's budget by 220,000 from the assigned software reserve dollars and 40,870 from overcollected revenues collected in the current year. The total supplement would be for 260,870.
Any questions or comments by the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Julie, where did the 40,870 come from? What, how did that get to be overcollected revenues?
That's coming, as did much of the overcollected revenues from last year. It's from our election contracts. We never know how intense those are going to be. We had quite a participation from the schools this year, which we are not expecting, and we never budget for a city runoff, and they pay that entire expense. So we budget a normal revenue for a normally participated election, but this just is the overcollected that we actually receive back for administering their elections for them.
Normally that would go back into the general fund, correct?
Yes, I'm a general fund-supported budget.
And so that would not be figured in our reserves for 2012 or 2013, that, that amount of dollars?
We make an adjustment in that analysis of general fund of the percent of overcollected revenues that we'll use.
Okay. On the, on the 220,000, that's an account that was set up for all departments to buy software, is that correct?
It was specifically requested from me and set up originally. When we put it into a reserve, it was relabeled software.
Is there any other departments that you know of need, that are needing of any software that might need some money out of this account, or?
I, I, I don't know. That would be more the board's information than mine.
Any other comments or questions? A couple, just clarifying, because I'm, I'm not understanding what the KVS is.
That's the existing software system that we use for financial.
Just to name up that software system.
Yeah. It's, it's the new accounting software, which is now, we've had it since 2002 or '03.
And then GFOA?
Is Government Finance Officers Association. It's a national association that all government finance officers belong to. It's a huge conference. They have more vendors there than could fill our civic center. And we, we went through all of those. New World was, was one of them. There's only four or five leading software vendors in governmental accounting, and we found this one, a couple of them, we, we didn't come with, with good recommendations, New World being one of them. We looked at Tyler, which is one the city's looking at. This is still cheaper than, than Tyler in the long run, and some of the things we've heard from and about Tyler, they're kind of like insurance companies. They sell you short, right, to begin with, but then everything explodes at the end. We've not found this for, for this software. We're not the top of their game, but we're no longer the bottom of their game, as well as KVS has been promising us a new software for, almost since we bought it, and that's not come to fruition. Another thing with this software, that was one of our first questions we asked, is when is our service, when are, when are you available for us to call you? KVS is out in New York. We only get about five hours of service out of them a day. These people, we have 10.
And I assume there's, they've got this, these programs in, in operation in other jurisdictions?
Yes.
Anything, anything about our size?
Yes, I can't remember them off the top of my head. Brookings County has it for their municipal. Like I said, we're right in the middle of the pack, and I, I can't remember which ones we checked with, but yeah.
And, and you've run, you've run this by Russ? I know he's new in.
Oh, yes. He's been quite, quite integral. He sat in, we made him sit in on our marathon two-day pre-training class. This also has about, it's got eight trips, five days a week, that's 40 trips, eight hours, 300, it's got about 400 hours of training in it. And, and we're hoping that we can have some massive, if we can find a place to do it, massive trainings that would include the staff of the departments that are going to be doing the actual input into the system, so that they can learn the input quicker, so we have more people asking questions, as well as they learn how to populate the reports that they want.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Holloway, or Davis.
Julian, on the back part of your letter that you gave us here in about paragraph five, it says, "Any remaining monies not spent in 2012 can be supplemented into my 2013 budget, thus using less than 100,000 budget for software reserves in 2013." Now, when it says, "Any remaining monies not spent," is that just for your department or for all departments?
No, that would just be of the software implementation of the 260,870, because some of that, the implementation will start as soon as I sign the contract, and we're hoping that will be Septem, by September 1st, and then we have to pay for all the modules, so we'll be withholding 18,000 originally from that until we determine on the project accounting. Then they come in and they do a business plan study, they come in and actually see if the way we're doing things now fits the best into their software system, and we've estimated the, the cost of time for that, to see if we're doing it the most efficiently, so it's kind of an administrative study that's done throughout the county. And it's just an estimate of what the cost of implementation will be through the end of the year. So if I have any money left, then it means I haven't spent them, haven't received the service, so I'll need to spend it in 2013. It, it includes quite a bit of the training time.
Anything further, Commissioner?
I think that was kind of my concern is, is, I know we've been doing a lot of changing and, and trying to get information from our old HP system into new systems and so on, and I was worried a little bit about starting in September, but it sounds like it's more of a planning thing initially.
Yes. We actually will not start anything with us or anyone else in the system until about March or April of next year, and that will be everything but payroll. And then payroll, we're going to do at the end of the quarter, probably starting October 1st, maybe starting with some input, but, and we haven't decided if we're going to do a old system, and then today everybody has to use the new system. Depends upon how our training is worked in, or whether we'll have to start with just a few, a few, but yes, a lot of it's prelim work up until October, working on some of the importing processes that they need to write programs for, so there's some individual programming in here done by, by Springbrook to import that information in.
Then my next question, and I see Russ coming, so he must have figured out where I was heading. I, I, I know that we've been really strapped in IT with all that's going on, and I, I do worry about how much more work that is going to mean for the IT staff, although it seems ultimately it will be a little less, but I.
Sure. I guess I just want to say that, that Julie has involved IT in this process pretty heavily, so Lori, Lori Wagner and I specifically have been involved in these meetings to make sure that everything that we're doing to get off the HP system is not a waste of time. But what you need to know is that the KVS system, the current accounting system, really is a standalone system that now is about 10 years old. So the thing, the things that are going to be beneficial for us out of this is that we're actually going to start shedding some of this homegrown software, not all of it. And the stuff that we keep does have to be integrated into this new system, and so that, that's really been the, the important part of these meetings that we've been involved in, and I think we have a good plan, and we're actually very excited about it, so we hope it can continue moving forward.
I tried to get as rid of many of those in-house programs as possible. I'm kind of frustrated I can't get rid of them all. Nothing, nothing against IT and their, their expertise up to date, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to schedule a hearing. I think we have, if not beat this to death, it's damn close.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ron.
Was there a second?
Thank you, Nancy.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Busker, do you wish any further information?
Oh, I have.
I called a question, Mr. Chair. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. See you on the 4th.
You just barely got that passed. Did they all leave? Well, I guess we're going to take a break.
I'm not, I'm here.
Where are we? Do you want a break or not? Commissioner?
I don't need one, I've already had one.
All right. We'll just continue then. Items from emergency management. We almost had an emergency.
Hi, the Alexa White from Emergency Management. The document you have before you is referring to a grant change that we've had, and I'll give you a little bit of background of how this came about. The 2010 grant year ended locally for us to submit awards and invoices for items that had been awarded July 31st of 2012. And when this 147,000 was for a tower communication project that was not going to be completed, we knew that in advance, and we'd asked for an extension through the end of 2012 calendar year. And then, right when we got into by, say, I think it was August 2nd or 3rd, we got a call from the Homeland Security Office, and they said, you know, we actually had this other grant, that's a 202,000, that's referred to here, the Interoperable Communication Emergency Grant Program Funding, that is very specific on what it can be spent for, and this 147,000 you have set aside for a tower communication project actually fits into this. And there's not many other things that people have submitted for projects that will fit into this particular grant. And so what we're asking you to do is give back the 147 that is still set aside, that you are waiting to complete on that project. We were waiting on an environmental, historical preservation, the EHP form, and, and all of the stuff that has to be done, a study. And, and in replacement, we'll give you this 202,000 grant, that's what's left in this grant, and it does have a local match. You can see there of 67,333.33. And with this tower project, there's been money set aside. I, I don't have the specifics on that, that they were already going to have to put in money towards completing the project, so there's already been money allotted earmarked set aside. I'm not sure exactly how and which departments have done that, but it's, it's a gain for us to use this other grant opportunity. The other advantage we have of doing this is when they get to the end of a grant year locally, they get all the money back from the entire state, and they see what's left, and they go through a reallocation process, and they allow all the jurisdictions to then again submit projects, and they're in competition with all the other places in the state. And so for this tower project, we can actually submit and ask for either this 147,000 back or more, depending on how much they have in the reallocation funding, and if they deem that that project is deserving of that. So what we're asking for is just a, a signature from the commission chair that would approve us accepting this new grant opportunity.
Any questions or comments by the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Where does the 67,333.33 come from?
I will defer that to someone who knows the answers for that.
I don't know that I know the answers, but I can help.
It's a 1.7 million dollar project, so any, the grant funds that we get are not going to even come close to covering it, so we're going to have to match anyway. The 67,000 is easily covered just in labor alone.
And so again, where does the money come from? Out of your budget, somebody else's budget?
It's going to be a combination.
Combined budget? Okay.
Yes, it is a combination, because this is infrastructure for the public safety communications system. We're in the process of securing the rest of that funding at the moment. The city has committed to support about 800,000 of that, and we're working on the rest as we speak.
What about the state? Have they committed anything to this?
It is the state system. Yes, it's the state system. We're building into the state system. They do provide most of the maintenance that goes with that, and a lot of the additional infrastructure outside of the local area.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Chair would entertain a motion. I'd make a motion to authorize the chairperson's signature on the new grant application.
Motion and a second to authorize the signature of this grant application. Change? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Fire Administrator, you're on deck.
Good morning, Denny Gordon, Pennington County Fire. First item on the agenda is the Secure Rural Schools Funding and Communities Act, generally sometimes just called Title III. These funds come from the U.S. Forest Service for the sale of generally timber or other natural resources. Part of that act from the federal government requires that county commissioners must elect to set aside either 15 or 20 percent for Title II and Title III projects. Simple, straightforward. You have to do that by September 30th. We have to turn in a report to them. There is a resolution that's, I think in your packet, I believe. Anyway, the, what we call the Mountain Pine Beetle Working Group met about a week ago, and our recommendation is to set aside 15 percent of the Secure Rural Schools Funding and Communities Act 2012 funds, with 8 percent to go to Title II, 7 percent to go to Title III. The remaining funds go to highway and the schools, the 85 percent, so.
Any questions by the commission?
Can you just briefly review what Title II and III are?
Title III is monies that counties, wait, briefly is going to be sort of tough, sir.
No, no, yeah, is that the money that you use for, for fire education?
Yes.
And we've given Scott for pine beetles?
Yes, yes, we're using the larger amount.
And two is the rack?
Yes. You, you made it very short. Resource Advisory Committee gets the Title II funds, and they decide the funding priority, and I think Bob Thompson was here, I'll say it, several weeks ago, and gave a report on what the Title II funds had funded. Thanks, Ron.
Any further questions?
I'm going to make a motion to set aside 15 percent of the Secure Rural Schools and Communities Funds for Title II in the amount of 8 percent, and Title III in the amount of 7 percent.
Is there a second? So, second. As listed on the back of that. Motion and a second?
Resolution, yes.
Does that include the signature of the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B.
Okay, second item is for a number.
Mr. Denny?
I'm sorry.
This, this is the mutual aid agreement between Elsor Air Force Base and the local fire departments, and I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments you want to add, Denny? Enough talk, time for action.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the public, from the commission? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item C.
All right. Once a week, there's a number of U.S. Forest Service Bureau of Land Management, Fall River, Custer, Mead, Pennington, Lawrence, Harding, Butte Counties, Office of Emergency Management. We have a conference call, National Park Service, I'm probably missing somebody. We have a conference call each Wednesday on whether, on the burn ban and, and the fire conditions. At the last conference call last Wednesday, the U.S. Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management would like to step back, go from what they call Stage Two, back to Stage One, which would allow some campfires in approved campgrounds on forest, on federal The local counties asked not to do that at this time, so we could bring that to our various county commissioners and ask for their input. Real short history, back in April, the commission passed a ordinance, number 632, dealing with burn bans, okay? Campgrounds, campfires in campgrounds were not prohibited unless the commission very specifically prohibited campfires in campgrounds. On July 3rd, you passed a motion to prohibit campfires in campgrounds, very specifically. So, that's where we're at. Campground, campfires are prohibited at this time. I don't know if you would like to lift that ban on them or not. And I believe, I know Al Johnson's here from KOA. The state of South Dakota Wildlife and Fire Suppression Division is also looking at trying to lift their bans or relax their restrictions, I guess is a better way to put it.
So, do you have any agency personnel here that would care to comment on this issue?
I don't see anybody from, I'll call it the US Forest Service. I don't think the gentlemen here are representing that, unless they are.
I'm here representing the Mystic Ranger District and...
Come forward, please.
Good morning, my name's John Stansfield and I'm the acting district ranger here on the Mystic Ranger District, Vice Bob Thompson. I'd like to comment on it. We, after the call last week, our county partners and still voiced some concern over raising the ban. I chimed in last week as well. I thought that we would look on the Mystic, on the central part of the forest here at backing down the restrictions to a Stage One versus a Stage Two. Based on, you know, our conditions out there are still dry, that hasn't changed much, but our weather conditions are moderating a bit and, you know, the days are shorter. And so, at this point, I intend to support doing Stage One here on the central part of the forest.
And may I ask, what's Stage One and Stage Two?
I knew you were gonna ask that.
Ah, thank you.
I think, I think with Stage One, basically, it's, you know, Stage Two, it's no open flame, it's don't be parking your vehicles in, you know, in the wildland places off the road. Whereas, Stage One, I think the real main difference will be allowing those open campfires within developed campgrounds, improved areas.
Any further questions? Any question for Denny? What's your recommendation?
I think the commission at this point could, now, look to Jay a little bit for the proper wording, but I'll call it rescind their motion to ban campfires in commercial campgrounds at this time. And I believe Jay created some wording. The thing we wanna try and make sure we do, though, is make a programmed effort so that everybody's informed of it in a timely manner. We don't have, law enforcement's aware of it, dispatch centers are aware of it, the public can become aware of it. So, and we don't know what that date might be. I have asked that they set it up, you know, several days ahead of time, but...
For me to follow your recommendation there?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I trust Denny and his thoughts on fires. Now, I make a motion that we leave it in place just like it is.
I'm gonna second that because while I realize that there are some changes going on with the length of day and it's cooler and all of that, we still have a terrible fire danger out there. We just can't go along with changing what we're doing now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and discussion. Denny, was that, is that your recommendation, that we leave it in place?
No, I believe we could, that's why I said, I'll rescind or not ban campfires in approved campgrounds.
Okay.
Again, I'm looking kinda to Jay to figure out the exact wording that the motion should be.
Well, I guess the motion we've got, though, is that we leave the burn ban in place just like it is today.
That's correct.
But I think it was probably misstated that it was your recommendation.
No, I said, I respect his opinion, but I'm going to go the opposite direction.
Okay.
Well, I guess I have, Mr. Chair. I guess I have a little problem with, the weather's supposed to, what, be back in the 90s today. Supposed to have thunderstorms possibly tomorrow, tonight and tomorrow. I'm not sure just where to go with this, so.
Certainly, the weather, we can't control the weather, but other than just the camp, the only thing we're talking about is campfires in approved campgrounds, commercial, private. And obviously, it only applies to those areas outside of the Black Hills Fire Protection District, which is, in essence, east of Highway 79, so. Because the state and the fed still trump any of our resolutions or ordinances, so. So, they could lift theirs and we would still have ours in place.
So, if we lift ours now, it doesn't count really in the Black Hills National Forest anyway until they make their decision, one way or the other, correct?
That would be my understanding.
Can I make a comment on that, though? However, the fact that we are not lifting ours has to have some influence on what they're going to do. It's going to allow them, or it's going to say to them, no, we don't wanna do this.
That's what I did ask, is that since only the commissioners can put on a burn ban, only the commissioners can lift it. And I wanted time to bring it to you for your recommendation, so.
And I think Denny's already covered this, but just really quick, if you were to lift the resolution banning the burning in campgrounds, permitted campgrounds, you just default back to the provisions of the original ordinance, which exempts them in the beginning. So, you just go back to square one and I guess that's your choice and that's what's before you at this point.
Okay, before we go any further, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on this issue?
My name is Al Johnson, I'm from Mount Rushmore, KOA. We're up in the central part of the Black Hills. And I wanna thank Denny Gordon for bringing this information to you this morning. And I'm encouraged to hear that the Forest Service is also thinking about lifting the ban in the Forest Service campgrounds in the Black Hills. What you heard Denny saying is that a group of maybe 10 or 15 different agencies and counties and so forth kinda banded together to have a consistent fire ban or fire approach with regard to that. And as I talked to the Forest Service about it when they first put the ban on, they're pretty proud of this administrative coalition. And it might be a very easy administration to treat the whole Black Hills area as one unit, but I would submit to you that it's maybe poor governance. If it's dry in Hermosa or Sturgis and conditions don't require it at Palmer Gulch, then there are thousands of people that could've been enjoying a campfire that were deprived of that right. In the Rapid City Journal last week, in a story about the drought monitor, it said, "Recent rainfalls over the area in somewhat cooler conditions reduce the impact of the drought conditions," Tody said. "Over the last 30 days, the central Black Hills have actually received above-average precipitation." Two weeks ago at Palmer Gulch, we had seven inches of rainfall in a one-week period. And I'm here to tell you that Palmer Gulch is as green as I've ever seen it in late August. So, I don't know all of the fire conditions or what goes into these determinations, but I can tell you that looking off my deck in the morning, everything is green. I believe that campfire ban should be related to specific risk on the ground at the time and not a broad brush stroke for the whole Black Hills area where a variety of conditions might exist. Here's why Palmer Gulch, and I can speak of that specifically, shouldn't have a ban right now. We have, at a developed campground, short green grass. We don't have any brush, we don't have fuels, we don't have ladder fuels. It's a cleaned-out, maintained area. There are basically fire lines at every site with the drive-through thing for the various campsites. Each campfire is surrounded by first green grass and then a groveled area. We have a state license, they come out and inspect that and make sure that the fire, that our real estate is maintained in a safe way to control fires. And not only do we have the campers watching, but in our case, we have other campsites all around any campfire and everybody keeps an eye on everybody else's campfire to make sure they don't get out of hand. And not only that, but we have staff that are constantly out on the ground and making sure that fires are put out when people go to bed, that they aren't built too big, they're managed. I'm not aware of any campfire, or any wildfire that's begun in a managed campground ever. We've had a fire at our campground, a motorhome caught fire when it pulled into our driveway one time, but we've never had a campfire get out of control in all of the dry years that, I've been there 35 years. And I don't know of any other managed, with staff on the ground, licensed campground that's ever had a fire get out of control. Riskes is round us from lightning, you're absolutely right, Nancy. Scares me to death, but it isn't campfires that cause that problem. It's lightning, it's a careless person throwing a cigarette butt out a window, it's a car accident on the highway that starts a wildfire going, but it's never been a campfire in a managed recreation campground. There are economic issues. At Palmer Gulch, we've lost, since the fire ban went into place just very directly, $20,000 in campfire sales. Not only that, I mean, it's hard, I don't have for you the number of hot dogs, we haven't sold the number of marshmallows, the number of Hershey bars or graham crackers. And I say that a little bit lightly, but I can tell you that it affects people's decision whether or not to go camping, if they can have a campfire or not. At Palmer Gulch, they have a lot of other things they can do, but at nine o'clock at night, when it's getting in the 40s overnight, it's getting dark early, there's nothing to do. And it affects our business. And I can tell you, we have a sister company that runs National Forest Campgrounds in the Black Hills, and there, there isn't anything to do except to enjoy having a campfire. And before the campfire went into effect, that company was running around 30% ahead of last year and having the best year ever. And it's given all of that back since the fire ban went in place. And again, we have hosts there, we have people taking care of managing that. So, it affects our business for no other purpose other than ease of administration. And I don't think that's good governance, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair? Yes?
It was my understanding that our burn ban doesn't impact the Black Hills, in the Black Hills Fire Protection Zone, so how are we involved in his burn ban?
We're, technically, we're not, other than the KOA campground at Rapid Valley.
No.
They're in Rapid City.
Oh, they're in the city? Okay, so never mind, that doesn't, it would not affect KOA, Palmer Gulch, other than it's a matter of support or agreement or trying to be consistent.
Influence on the, on the national?
Correct.
That's, okay. To call it what it is.
Because our burn ban's not prohibiting you from doing it?
That's right, it's not.
Let me think about that. I guess there's a state agency, is that right? That actually is the one that, the National Forest doesn't control what happens in private land within the Black Hills Fire Protection, but there's a state agency that does?
Yeah. South Dakota State Wildlife and Fire Suppression Division is responsible for all fire suppression and all state and private land within the Black Hills Fire Protection District. In essence, again, west of Highway 79. And KOA Palmer Gulch falls into that group.
And they made a ban on open fires?
Correct. Secretary of Ag, Walter Bones...
And where are they at now on wanting to allow campfires in campgrounds?
I'm not speaking for them, but I think they would like to lift the ban on campfires in approved commercial campgrounds.
And if we, if we don't lift our ban, will they still go ahead and lift theirs?
They certainly could.
Will they?
I don't know.
I mean, you've been at the meetings.
I think they're gonna push very, very strong to lift the ban.
Okay. But one of the things that this group that gets together and talks about whether we should or shouldn't have a ban was to try to do it consistently throughout.
Correct.
And you were at the meeting, and what was the decision at the meeting? Was it, was it that they wanted, the group there wants to lift the ban?
Forest Service, BLM, and I believe the state, I'm not, you know, I'm not speaking for those, they wanted to lift the ban. The counties that were represented, the emergency managers and myself, from Fall River, Custer, Mead, Pennington, Lawrence, okay, we felt, keep it on for at least another week until we could at least get back and visit with our county commissioners.
But you say, you think it should be lifted?
I think we could lift the ban on campfires in approved campgrounds. Alright, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion relative to the motion? Yes?
Would you have the motion read again?
To leave the burn ban in place.
Motion was to retain or reaffirm the burn ban. Any further discussion? Oh, go ahead.
My name is Doug Olson, I'm with the Crooked Creek Campground, two miles south of Hill City. And I'm like Al here, you know, we have water all over the campground, we have personnel there till 11 o'clock at night watching these campfires and providing a bucket of water, a hose, to help that out, so. And I'm like with Al, you know, it has cost us a considerable lot of income from the firewood, not that we depend on the firewood to run our business, but I do believe that, you know, a private campground should be allowed to have the fires. I would be cautioned about places up like Ditch Creek, where they have nobody to manage it and nobody to watch it, because there are people there leaving their campground, campsite without putting that fire out, so. I would like to see it lifted, just to, for the families that come around for campfire.
But if, given the difference in jurisdiction and state law and all that sort of thing, what we do here wouldn't affect you anyway, would it?
No. Well, we haven't been able to have a campfire now for a month and a half, I suppose.
Again, the Crooked Creek Campground, it's a lot of Cs, Crooked Creek Campground is within the Black Hills Fire Protection District, so they're governed by the South Dakota Wildlife and Fire Suppression, so.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Denny, if Pennington County today did not lift the ban, the Forest Service and the state Wildlife and Fire would decide to lift it, what would be the outcome of that to these folks in the campgrounds in the Black Hills National Forest?
A little bit of confusion, but every, let's just say that the state of South Dakota lifted their burn ban and the Forest Service and Bureau of Land Management and all the federal state agencies did, okay? Everything kind of in essence, west of Highway 79, and that's just a general guideline, excuse me, they could have campfires in campgrounds. Anything east of Highway 79, if there's any private campgrounds out there, would not be allowed to have it. So, there would be a little bit of confusion, just like when we put it on.
It still would not hinder these folks from operation if the Forest Service and the Wildlife and Fire lifted their ban, they would be allowed to have campfires in their campgrounds?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay, so the only thing that we would be restricting is wildlife fires on the prairie, if we happen to get a fire out there?
Correct. East of Highway 79, private, private ground only.
Do we have anybody here from any campground that's out in that area? That's, do we have any campground out there?
I think there's one or, I'll say one or two in Wall, but I'm not sure if they're in, yeah, Tim says in Wasta, there's one campground there.
But they're in, they're within a municipality?
Walls probably are, but I don't believe Wasta's considered a municipality, so.
There's one in Interior, KOA, outside of Interior, so, Kona County.
If it's outside of Interior, it's probably in the other, it's not in... If it's outside of interior, it's probably in the other, it's not in Pennington County, so.
Wasta's a town.
Wasta's a town? Okay, so it wouldn't affect Wasta. I mean, really in essence, it almost affects no one. I mean, it really does, but, for campgrounds, yeah.
So if we leave our position to where it is, everybody else is gonna be taken care of it? And basically, we could prevent, or hopefully prevent, the wildland fires on the prairie. And that's some things that we've had problems with, the lightning strikes and the like, so. But we haven't had any problem with campfires, correct?
Much like Al, though, I do not recall of a, I'll say of a fire out on the, in the prairie, from a campfire at a campground.
And we don't even know if there's any campgrounds out east that isn't in a municipality, so I guess we're preventing something that doesn't exist.
It's like Hill City's got a new campground in the city limits, they are allowing campfires in there as long as you are cooking.
And where would that hit?
It's in Hill City, right on the south edge of Hill City, I don't know the name of the campground, they just opened up, but they did put up a sign that says, "Campfires are allowed here for cooking." Where you can cook a hot dog for a long time.
Or shrimp.
Yes.
Thank you, thanks Doug.
Okay, anything further? If not, we do have a motion and a second. You want a roll call vote?
I would like one.
We'll do a roll call.
Kelvin?
Yes.
Holloway?
No.
Busker?
Yes.
Davis?
I still don't know where to go with this, I'm thoroughly confused about it.
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Three yes, it's two no.
Motion carried. Thank you Danny.
Thank you.
Item twenty-three, Highway Department.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I can save a lot of hot air, a lot of talk, and a lot of power hanging on the mic, and I'd make a motion to approve the Highway Department's recommended contract for road salt for this year.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Now, Hiney, if you want to say something, you can.
No, that's fine, thank you.
For discussing it. Anyone else wishes to make a comment relative to this motion? If no comment, we will call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to take a ten-minute break.
Motion to take a ten-minute break, is there a second?
Yeah.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry it. Back to order, and the next item on the agenda is items from the chair, and I think I will just pass beyond that unless someone has questions of the chair. And I would say that we're not going to schedule a seminar on computer systems for next meeting. We had it today. Item twenty-five, request for representative to appear, this is from the West Dakota Water Development Board, and I see someone here from there, so you have the floor.
Good morning, Blaze Emerson, Executive Manager for West Dakota Water Development District. Here on behalf of the board, we do also have in the audience, Orlin Paulson, who is the Chair of the Board, and also one of the other directors, George Farabee. At our last West Dakota Water Development Board, the Board did direct, or made a motion basically to ask the sponsor of the three nineteen watershed project, which is Pennington County, to send a representative to our September Board Meeting to clarify the issue of to where the three nineteen project starts and where it ends. That motion passed, and all I can say, there was not a whole lot of discussion on that. I think the main thing there was some clarification, there's been some confusion whether Sheridan Lake was included in that project area, so. Any questions from there?
So, go ahead.
Are there maps and stuff that are available, or, I guess I'm not confused as to why you couldn't look at those maps?
Hi, Brittany Molitor, Water Protection Coordinator. There are maps available for that watershed, however, DE and R, and it does state it in our project, when we apply to DE and R for grant funds, it's in that project information, it's everything above Sheridan Lake, basically, is where the project area is. The delineation for the project area was done by the NRCS and USGS, and that's how we got the maps. So that's essentially what we use, is their delineation of the watershed, and then DE and R determined it was everything above Sheridan Lake, because that's where the TMDL area was and where it was determined.
So, excuse me, did you have anything further, Nancy?
No.
So you're saying Sheridan Lake is not in the project?
No, it's not, according to our project, no, we're not spending any money on anything in Sheridan Lake, it's just on Spring Creek before it goes into Sheridan Lake.
So Blaze is, does that relate to some of the question that your Board had?
Like I said, there was not a whole lot of discussion, so I'm kind of trying to, I don't want to go into any ones, persons, or any of the Board's, you know, ideas, if they had any additional questions, Chairman Peterson, but I guess maybe if we could get a map, and I'll work with Brittany on that, do you have copies of the map?
Well, actually, it'll probably be easier if you just contact the NRCS or USGS, because they have the maps. What we do is we just get that shape file essentially and put it with our GIS, so.
We can do that.
So the item on the agenda is a request for a representative to appear to, what, one of your meetings?
To our September Board Meeting, that is, I'm sorry, I did not write the date down off, if I can pull it up here quick. Make sure I have it, that is September nineteenth. Yes.
And do you assume that the representative should be a commissioner, is that?
I guess that is up to the Board.
Danny Commissioner, this is in your district?
Yeah, it is. So, Mr. Chair, my suggestion would be if the West Dakota Water wants some information pertaining to this or any other function that the county does, all they have to do is come over, get on the agenda, and we're glad to give it to them. And I will not be here on the nineteenth, or the eighteenth, or the twentieth. But the twentieth happens to be my birthday, so all presents would be appreciated. So even if it comes from West Dakota Water and its Board members, it'd be great.
Would a staff member satisfy?
I believe so, yes.
Brittany, can you?
Mr. Chair? What exactly, I mean, you know, the question was about the location, and we answered that today, and certainly, all of those tapes, I mean, those are available to you, I'm not sure what, I mean, it'd be kind of nice, I would think, if we knew specifically what information you were looking for.
The motion is, you know, where it begins, where it ends, that was what the motion of the Board was.
So, we answered that today.
That is correct.
Okay, let's see, this letter says September twelfth is the Board Meeting.
I might have made a error in there, I have the nineteenth on my calendar, let me just double-check that, make sure I didn't, it should be the nineteenth.
Okay, so the letter?
The letter is incorrect.
Incorrect. Ms. Paulson, you're the chairman of this group, do you have anything you wish to offer?
No, no, Your Honor.
Wisely spoken.
So how do we dispose of this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I believe in my dissertation that I said that I thought if they needed more information, that they could come to the County Commission, and that would be my motion.
Is there a second to that?
So what you're saying, Ken, is you, you know, get a list of what information they want, just come to us?
Yep.
Okay, I would go along with that, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any comments from anyone else? Commissioned, audience? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, planning and zoning, and we have a consent calendar. Dan, would you read that into the record, please?
Good morning, Dan Genison, Pennington County Planning Director. There are five items on the consent calendar, they include a planned unit development review for James Buchanan, that is to be continued to the September fourth Board of Commissioners Meeting. Item B is a minor plat, twelve dash thirty, and a subdivision regulation variance, twelve dash eleven, for Robert and Cordelia Johnson, and approval was recommended by the Planning Commission. Item C is a first reading in a public hearing of a rezoning request, twelve oh nine, for Robert and Cordelia Johnson also, and approval was recommended of that also. Item D is a layout plat for James and Kathy Boyham, approval was recommended in that. Item E is a first reading in a public hearing of a rezoning request, twelve oh eight, and it comprehends the plan amendment, twelve oh six, for Shane Guidell, and that was continued to the September fourth Board of Commissioners Meeting.
Does anyone wish to remove any of the items from the consent calendar as stated? Any Commissioners? Motion?
Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda for planning and zoning as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the planning and zoning consent calendar as presented, items A through E. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item F is a first reading in a public hearing of an ordinance amendment, twelve oh four, from Pennington County, which is to amend section four oh one, intent of Pennington County zoning ordinance. Planning Commission recommended approval of this. What it is, is item I would be added, would it say alterations may be made to a non-conforming structure if the building or structure is legally non-conforming as to use, but legally non-conforming as to setbacks or height. The building or structure may be enlarged or added to, provided that the enlargement or addition complies with the requirements of the district in which the building or structure is located. What it would do is allow structures that are currently legal non-conforming to acquire a building permit without first obtaining a variance. If the structure was built prior to ninety-four, it is currently legal non-conforming, if they come in, try to get a building permit, right now, it requires them to go through the variance process. Staff used to recommend approval of that, and County Board usually granted it, and so what this do, it would save the County Board time and the applicant time and money spent to get a variance that is usually just approved. So staff is recommending that this also be approved.
Is that eighteen ninety-four or nineteen ninety-four?
Nineteen ninety-four.
Any further discussion relative to this amendment? Any comments from the audience? Motion?
So you want approval of the first reading, Dan?
Yes.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance amendment twelve oh four, item I.
Chair, a second?
About a second.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance amendment twelve oh four. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item G.
Item G is an appeal of a conditional use permit, twelve dash seventeen, ARC Business Ventures, Penny and John Fulshime, this is to allow for a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Planning Commission made a motion to approve this CUP, however, it failed with a vote of three to four. This is, a number of times, this has gone before Planning Commission, the first time it went to Planning Commission, it was a tie vote, so they sent it to the next Planning Commission, and that's what happened at the last Planning Commission. A lot of discussion over this. It is located within the community of Silver City, it is zone suburban residential district, it is a three-bedroom cabin, which they would like to use as a vacation home rental. It was just built in two thousand nine, they do have holding tanks on the property, two eighteen hundred gallon tanks, DE and R did approve it for eight people, and staff is recommending approval, or did recommend approval, with ten conditions. There are a number of letters in there, there's almost equal amount in support and an equal amount against this condition, or this vacation home rental within the community of Silver City. I don't know what else to add, if you have any questions, I will certainly answer them.
Any questions of Dan by the Commission?
Dan, did they meet, did they meet all of the criteria that was laid out in that vacation rental home ordinance as it relates to applying for their conditional use permit?
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dan, do we have other people wishing to testify on this, or how do you suggest?
I believe there are, yes.
So, you want, is there any comment from Patrick or anyone before we open up testimony? Is Patrick here?
Nope.
Jay? Jay, you probably, are you familiar with this issue? Have any comments?
I think it'd be appropriate if there's people for or against to come to the podium, and I don't know if there's, if you have any specific questions of me, I could try to answer, but.
Any technical questions before we open it up for public testimony?
Mr. Chair, Jay, I'm still confused as opposed to our last meeting. If they are opposed to it based on just they're opposed to it, we can't really use that in our decision, am I correct?
Well, I think our Supreme Court made it pretty clear in that case law I was talking to you about, that it isn't just a numbers game. You don't listen to ten people, and if six are against and four are for, then automatically the six win. There has to be evidence that you consider, it has to be discussed in the context of the criteria for approving or denying conditional use permits, and it isn't just a mere statement for or against, it's what evidence do you have of that? What evidence do you have that it is violating on-the-ground today current zoning ordinance requirements? Versus alleging that that might be happening? Who actually saw it? When did it happen? How did it happen? Discussions like that, so that you have actual factual evidence. I think that's what the Supreme Court, and a couple weeks ago when we discussed that, was cautioning Boards such as this one to just be thorough in garnering that information, it's not just a numbers game, it's not merely an allegation issue, it's actual substantial evidence to support a Board or a City Council, whatever, decision on the matter. And I know you'd asked me, Commissioner Trautman, last time about the historical use of a vacation home, rental of a vacation home, and I don't know if I was clear, unclear, or not about that, and I guess I would just, I would say this, in talking to Patrick, and talking to Dan, and my recollection and understanding, the reason why the Board went through all of the efforts that you did, from the public hearings to all the hearings right in this room, amending the ordinance and approving that resolution, that was all done with the full knowledge and awareness that probably all, if not most all, of these homes had been or currently were being used as vacation home rentals. And it was my understanding that the point was to give them a timeframe, especially an SRD, that May twenty-third deadline to come in showing that they had the state permits, and then within ninety days of that date that they applied for their conditional use permit, to avoid the penalties, well, the penalties would only be for if they were operating. So the full understanding was, is there's operation going on in our county, but it would be from that point forward, are there other issues such as septic, parking, drainage... such as septic, parking, drainage issues, that Dan would be able to point out and say, yeah, these are current problems? That might be grounds for denial, absolutely. But other than that, I guess it was listen to the people, hear what the issues are. And you can grant with conditions, you can deny. I mean, that's where you all come in, or your involvement is. So I hope I'm reasonably clear on that. It's not an easy thing to grasp, but it's an obligation that we all try to meet.
Do you think further? Okay, I'm sure, thank you, Jay. We have, we'll have proponents and opponents. And the appeal papers that I'm looking at, or the memo, I guess, is signed by Gregory Strowman. Is that party in the office? So I'm going to, like I say, we have proponents and opponents, and I don't think we need to do a lot of repetition. If someone speaking ahead of you says, has already said what you're thinking, then please respect the situation enough to either add something new or at least don't spend a lot of time repeating something that's already been said. So, Mr. Strowman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Greg Strowman, I'm with the Banks &amp; Johnson Law Firm here in Rapid City. I appeared before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Troutman were there on behalf of Folsheims and ARC Development. The Folsheims built this property in 2009. And after they got into the construction process and after it was built, they decided that they were going to try to do some rental of the facility. It's a vacation home for them and their family. I've been out there when they've had family gatherings because I've known John and Penny since I grew up in here and, for years. I've known them since I was eight years old. John's father was a county and circuit court judge, and actually a South Coast Supreme Court Chief Justice. Penny's father, although he died at a young age, was a progressive businessman in here. And her younger brother happens to be one of my childhood friends. But anyway, they have deep roots in South Dakota. And they wanted to, as they're nearing retirement age, they wanted to have a place to come and stay and visit with family and friends there. They had the wherewithal and the ability to build a very nice structure. But it is their vacation home. And they intend to spend progressively more time there, but they still want to have the opportunity to rent it out because they meet with, they met the conditions for a conditional use permit. When we had the meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was, I think as Jay said, or as Dan said, probably an equal amount of people in support and in opposition. And I've also submitted letters from those people who couldn't be here because the meeting was actually postponed the last time. But I've submitted letters from the Folsheims, from other property owners, McLean's, Hutchinson, Telkamp, Jim Bickett, Bob Bickett, Trandles, Donovan, Chapman, and Robinalt. I have additional letters that probably wouldn't be, have made it through email very well, scanned in, from Miners, from Sarah Beth Donovan, and from Cole Lang. And at the last meeting, we did have the person who actually owns the place right next, the closest to Folsheim's property. He was here to speak and support, couldn't be here today. His name is Doug Isaacson. All that aside, I agree with what Mr. Alderman said. This is really not a popularity contest. It's really a situation where the county has passed an ordinance. And if the criteria have been met, then the conditional use permit should be granted. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some opposition, but it wasn't opposition that was based on evidence of any sort. There was some allegations of some illegalities. Those are totally unfounded. They've done nothing illegal. They've met every condition that was met. But Dan referred to the zoning ordinance and the five factors that the Planning Commission could have considered in reviewing it. That's in his report. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property, normal and orderly development, the utilities, access road, off-street parking, and control of offensive odor, fumes, et cetera. The planning office did their investigation in due diligence and recommended that the permit be granted with conditions. And as he pointed out to Commissioner Holloway, those criteria and conditions have been met. And as Jay said, that's really what the inquiry is, is have the criteria been met? And if they have, then it's incumbent upon the board to grant the conditional use permit. If there's evidence next year, when they try to renew this, that there's some violations or that they aren't meeting the criteria, that should be addressed at that time. But for now, where we are in this process, there isn't any basis for the commission, any factual basis for the commission to deny this. And I'd ask respectfully that the commission would approve this conditional use permit. And on behalf of John and Penny, they couldn't be here today, but that's their request of the commission.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
I have a ton of comments.
You what?
I have a lot of comments, Mr. Chairman, if I may. This is exactly the reason I have voted against these in SRDs, because once you get, it was kind of foisted on us that, well, it's a conditional use permit, so you can always say no when that time comes. No, you can't. I think Mr. Strowman is probably absolutely right, along with Jay. It's been my experience that once you set down the rules, that's it. You follow them or you don't. There's no, we don't, we don't really, what they're saying is, we don't have a choice. If, we originally said, here's what it takes, and if they've done that, we don't have a choice. Doesn't matter. If our, if our planning director says, yes, they've met all the criteria, that's it. And so if every house in Silver City wants to become a vacation rental, all they gotta do is meet the criteria, and they all will be. And it will have a whole business town.
I don't think that's, that's not an accurate statement.
I think it is.
Because to meet the criteria, they had to have made their application by a certain deadline, right?
Yes.
And so if they haven't made that, if there's people up there that haven't met that deadline, they can't now become, get a conditional use permit. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So we're not going to get any new ones?
That's true. I mean, the, there was a resolution, or the ordinance says that they had to apply through the state prior to May 23rd to get their, at least apply to get their license.
And if they go in on July, July 1st, or in this case, August 21st, and make an application, they don't meet our criteria then, do they?
So you're saying that we will never have another, a new vacation home in an SRD?
Actually, the resolution...
The resolution was to basically allow currently operating vacation home rentals to apply to the state to then go through the CUP process. So if they didn't apply prior to May 23rd, they're out of luck.
Currently operating ones.
Well, the, I guess I'd have to look at the resolution. I don't know if it actually said currently operating. As long as they have applied prior to May 23rd, they could come in and then get a conditional use permit. Well, it wasn't even the resolution. It's actually written in our ordinance that they allow people in SRD to get that, have that ability.
I'll look that up too, but it doesn't matter in this case.
So if they didn't, if they didn't apply prior to May 23rd, and they're in SRD, they can't get a conditional use permit at this time, or any time in the future?
Any further discussion? Any other proponents on this issue? Opponents? Anyone who wishes to testify against this?
Morning. Patrick Breen, Silver City. There are a number of people here that would qualify as an opponent. We don't want to all stand up here and take your time and repeat many of the concerns and issues that we have stated in planning and zoning meetings in front of you. So I'm going to try and just remind the board that there is a consortium out there that has been an opponent of the proliferation of vacation home rentals in Silver City from the outset. You know, I, I think we recognize that, you know, it's a difficult decision for the board to make sometimes, but it is your job. We have got the state's attorney and Folsheim's legal representation pointing out that there are no factual bases for making an alternative decision if they met all the criteria. I believe, though, your position is to disseminate those non-factual and those things that are not easily defined. I submitted a letter to you all yesterday. I hope you had a chance to look at it and read it. In that, my points were trying to address some what I consider legal, question marks, in what your role is. One is the definition of intent. You had no factual discrepancies that they have stated. I'd like to get back to that later. But you also have the power to define intent. And we've asked you that. That's legal. You're in that role to help define that. I mean, we did grant the ability for a CUP and a vacation home rental in an SRD. But you still have the ability to disagree with that, say that the intent of a residential community is not to have a business right next door. There's arguable statements whether this is business or not. I say live next door to one and didn't tell me that. One of the points that I addressed in that letter was the statement made that they met all the criteria. I'm not sure. Was the application for 101 Sherman submitted on time? There has been discussion on that. In fact, it was not submitted on time. Then there's also been the question of the date of that paperwork being altered. So they did show it was submitted on time. Now, we have a statement saying all the criteria was met, but I would argue that in this instance, on this property, they might want to bundle it, and they're trying to bundle it, but if you're looking for legal, factual basis to deny this, that is a solid one, I believe, to deny this application for a vacation home rental. This particular property was not submitted on time. And also, the paperwork was altered. It should be dismissed, null and void, and denied if you're going to look at that criteria as factual and legal. You know, Jay did, you know, articulate that, you know, you do have a role here, and you fit that parameter of trying to make decisions that are not easily made from the letter of the law, and it was written hard on paper. And I'm reminded, we just got through the Olympics, I'm reminded of the score, the judges in scoring some of these competitions, particularly the gymnastics. And you are the judges in many respects on these types of issues. And they have a criteria of 10 to 0 of what criteria they meet. And it's an intuitive decision. And we reserve certain aspects of that judging. I'm sorry, I was distracted by the discussions of the board. Anyway, my point of bringing up the analysis to the Olympics is we have a criteria. And I'm not sure if everything presented in front of you for the denial of this CUP doesn't meet all the criteria for being denied. We have a lot of public input. We have legal and factual discrepancies. Yeah, maybe there's half and half. I don't know, I would argue maybe if you factor in all those that were fighting for the denial of a vacation home rental in an SRD, if it wouldn't be more in our favor. I mean, your job is to weigh, how many of those letters are people with part-time cabins who would like to join the fray of vacation home rentals? How many letters that are in opposition are full-time residents? I mean, that's really kind of your job, to decipher those nuances. You know, I believe that this does meet the criteria for denial. And quite frankly, if it doesn't, what does? I mean, what is this process? Do we disregard this process all entirely? I mean, are we wasting our time? Are we going into the future where a CUP is then just going to be granted if it meets? I mean, it's just going to be through the boards, behind closed doors, and then the public then has an opportunity after the fact to then submit class-two misdemeanors? You know, have the sheriffs called X amount of times, have so many complaints that then we possibly reject it? I mean, because that's kind of what the formula is being set up for. And we have to, you know, rely on you, the judges, those that are voting, you know, what spectrum of this criteria does this fall on? And decipher those nuances. And anyway, I just really believe that this CUP on this vacation home rental should and legally be denied.
I may have missed something in your presentation, but were there specific discrepancies in the criteria that you wanted to point out? You did mention something about a...
I did, I give you to the fact that in the planning and zoning meeting, there was discussion. Ms. Troutman had brought that up, and it was long in conversation about the paperwork was not filed actually prior to the deadline of 23rd on this particular property. And when it was addressed, it was clear that the date on that was altered. I don't have that copy in front of me. Maybe Ms. Troutman has more specifics she can articulate on it.
That should be something that should be easily verified.
Right. And I think it has been bantered, and it was chosen to be accepted. But yet, I'm arguing, if we're looking for, and if you want a legal hold on denying this, then I think that can be addressed and should be, and factored into some of the opposition from the people opposing this particular vacation home rental, and the proliferation of vacation home rentals. I mean, Ron, he's addressed what is the future of Silver City. And we're really trying, and we're fighting hard to preserve that future. It deserves that fight. And we have a lot of people that have given up a lot of time and energy and effort, not just about particulars, but for the preservation. And we understand what role you play, and I'm trying to give you access to that.
Yeah, the amount of time and commitment and so on is quite evident over the past whatever time. But let's just stay with the specifics. And Dan, you were ready to react to my question.
There was question as to the application they submitted to the state for the Department of Health. However, there is a letter from the Department of Health that indicates that they were the ones that altered the application. It's in your pack... It's, it's in your packet also that you have in front of you. And they actually stated the Department of Health would consider the original application the date, as the date, the licenses were in process for lodging licenses. Hope this helps clear up any confusion. There's more to the letter if you want to read through it, but it basically states that they did meet the deadline.
Mr. Chair. Dan, what's the, what's the address of this property?
This one, I believe, is 101 Sherman Street.
Is there more than one application took together here?
The Fochaim submitted two applications and that was the confusion. She submitted one application for both properties. She has 101 and 109. Planning Commission approved the 109 and the confusion was is then the state looked at the application and said, you have to do two applications. They're two separate properties. And so that's when they modified the application and-
This application they got right here, this one we're working off of.
Yeah, it's kind of got a scribble of one on top of it.
Kind of got a scribble of two, zero, something to start with. And then it's got a scribble of a one over the top of a two. And then if we're dealing on 101 or 109, there's no 101 or 109 there at all. It's 102.
Well-
So we don't have an application that fits the right criteria. I, I don't know.
No, the, the application is actually 101 that's written there.
Where?
In that establishment physical address, no P O box, that actually is a 101. It's pretty rough 101, but it is a 101.
Plain as the nose on your face.
It originally was a 109 and that's kind of why it looks like a two. And that's coming from Department of Health. They're the ones that modified that application.
And then now-
They actually state that in their letter.
Who put the date stamp on it at the top of the page?
I don't know who did that. I imagine maybe the Department of Health did. I don't know. I can't verify that.
But that's not our stamp. We don't do that, right?
Well, we do date stamp stuff, but this isn't our date stamp.
Okay. Because one of them says April 24th on one side and on the other side, I think it said April 27th. I'm not sure. Okay. Anything further? Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to say that I can't believe that any courtier right in mind, of course, lots of courts aren't right in mind most of the time. How they could possibly say that just because you live next door to something, you have nothing to say about what happens there? That, that really bothers me and I don't know whether you say the Supreme Court made a mistake or an error or whatever it might be. But my goodness, that's the American way that your people have a right to say what happens next to you or what happens to you or what happens to your family and to your property. So I, I find fault with that judgment.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Jay. Jay, when you said that renting out these vacation homes is not a business, has the South Dakota Supreme Court ruled on that or is that other surrounding jurisdictions?
My, my recollection, and Mr. Grody is not present here right now that did most of the research on that. My recollection is our Supreme Court has not specifically addressed that issue, but a number of jurisdictions around us and elsewhere have addressed that very specifically in that it is not commercial, it is residential. And they've addressed it specific to vacation homes being either commercial or residential. So my logical leap in that from the legal background is our Supreme Court would give a lot of interest and attention to how other jurisdictions, particularly when it's very specifically addressed, it's not general.
But, but that's really kind of irrelevant if they're meeting our, whether it's, whether, whatever the definition of a business is, is irrelevant because we, we passed a vacation rental home ordinance and the wisdom of this board was that people who are currently operating one in a, in a residential area, if they made their application in time, then they would be granted a conditional use permit. And we set it up that way to not run those people out of business, but not to let it grow.
That's my understanding exactly of Commissioner Holloway. And with regard to the commercial residential, that's only with regard to the reference of covenants. Whether covenant that says no commercial business and that's not apparently at issue here, there's not a covenant that, that's being addressed here. That was a different issue previous in time that we were addressing, the Supreme Court case law on whether or not Supreme Court considered vacation home rentals commercial versus residential. And I guess in general, what one, one legal, strong legal distinction between what we're doing here today and when the voters go to peer and they lobby their, their representatives, that's not a contested case. They're, they're, that's where those representatives are taking personal opinion from their constituents and they're making decisions oftentimes based on numbers. This is more of a contested case, an actual hearing where rules and laws have been set down to say, here's how you conduct your decision-making process. So this is different than simply going to your representatives and say, I think you ought to pass this law or that law. This is an actual hearing where parties are contesting and asking this tribunal to make a decision based on criteria. And our Supreme Court has addressed how you go about doing that. And it's not merely how many property owners agree or disagree with the issue. It's about evidence at a hearing. And that's frustrating, I'm, I'm certain, but I'm telling you that from the legal standpoint, it's a significant distinction between what you're doing here and what your representatives would do in peer, for instance.
And, and we, if, if we grant this conditional use permit and they don't follow the conditions, then people can complain about it and it can come back to this board and we can rescind their conditional use permit because they didn't follow the rules.
Absolutely. And both in two ways. One, just when you set it up for renewal, whether it's annual, every two years, whatever. And then, as you said, per complaint. If you approved it today, there might be a complaint and in two weeks, they're back in here. So it's, it's an ongoing process and I think that's exactly what the board intended to be the, the structure. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you know, Dan, I've gone through this over and over again. I cannot find that letter from the state in this packet here.
Send the back, kind of an email on the back of one of the first pages.
An email.
Sort of cut off and hard to read.
Okay.
Oh, right here.
Don't lose that one now.
We were both looking through it, trying to find it.
Don't lose that one now. Anyway, as I listen to this discussion, it kind of reminds me of the helicopter deal. And at that time, I asked a question then and it still lives in my mind and that is, how far away do I have a right to control what someone else does with their property? You know, we, it, and when I asked that question, either person, the complainer or the defender or whatever you call them, could say the same question and, and you answer my question, I'll answer yours and we see what kind of a position we end up with. And I think you'd both defend your right to control what you do on your property. And so Dan, I need to clarify here. It says an appeal of a conditional use permit 1217. And then in italics, the Planning Commission moved to approve the conditional use permit and the motion failed three to four. So what are we appealing? And then what, what are we, I mean, how do we get to the point where we are in a position to appeal or to grant or deny a conditional use permit?
Well, the applicant is appealing the decision of the Planning Commission, which the motion did not pass. So they're hoping to get approval of this conditional use permit.
So are we going to have to make two motions?
No, well, depending on what your motion is, if your motion is to approve with conditions, that's the only motion you have to make.
Well, it's, I guess I'm confused, but it, it seemed, would seem to me like we'd have to deny the appeal first.
I don't believe that to be the case.
What am I, what, where am I mixed up, Jay?
The, the effect of the decision of the Planning Commission was that they didn't get their conditional use permit approval. So they're appealing that to this body to either agree you don't get it or to agree that you do get it.
Okay.
Because the effect is they, they, they didn't approve it.
Unless there's further testimony or clarification, is there anything further you wish to say?
No, I'm afraid I'd be repeating myself. I guess I do understand in deciphering all these comments, there is still in existence a variable that you do hold. Mr. Holloway is holding firm that if it meets the criteria, you can, you should grant it. I still hold that you hold the value, variable that you can deny it. And there is precedent for denying that. So I request that you do just that and, and hold the previous decision by the planning and zoning to deny this C U P.
Thank you. Any, yes, you may.
Could I just respond briefly? I guess I'd follow up on the chair's comments about, you know, the Fochaim's have property rights here too. And there are some people that don't want them to be able to pursue their property rights, but they do have rights and the rights are stated in the law. And Commissioner Holloway and Mr. Alderman have talked about what the role of this board is in making a decision today. And I just wanted to add that there is a South Dakota statute, 11 dash 12 dash 17.3, which refers to ordinance authorizing conditional use of real property. It says, and I quote, "The approving authority shall consider the stated criteria, the objectives of the comprehensive plan and the purpose of the zoning ordinance and its relevant zoning districts when making a decision to approve or disapprove a conditional use request." It does not say that they should consider popular vote. This is not a popular vote situation. This is an application of law to fact. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, it also says intent and purpose, and they're pretty loose terms, that we can determine on our own basis, not necessarily exactly what the law says.
Any further comment? Mr. Chair, I do. Just to clarify and maybe I'm right, maybe I'm wrong here, but Dan, I think that the, that the ordinance is set up that would allow people that got the state permit to make an application to the county for a conditional use permit. It was not an automatic deal that they were going to get a conditional use permit. That was never the case. It was that they could apply for a conditional use permit to operate a vacation home rental in Pendleton County. Am I correct in that?
Yes, I could actually read the section in the ordinance that you're referring to. What it says is V H Rs are permitted with approval of conditional use permit any suburban residential zoning district if the applicant has a permit from the state of South Dakota to operate a V H R at the date of passage of this ordinance amendment or if the applicant has applied for such a permit at the date of passage of this ordinance amendment.
And that was passed, did it?
I'm sorry?
Refresh my memory again, it was passed?
May 23rd.
Anyone wish to respond further on the opponent's side? If not, we're going to close discussion and Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the, is it 10 conditions, Dan?
Yes.
With the 10 conditions that are listed by the Planning Department.
Is there a second? I'll second it. No further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote.
Peterson?
Hi. Hi. No.
A decision no. Okay. Buscree?
No.
Holloway?
Hi.
Troutman?
You know, the hard part is that I feel like we have to legally. I don't agree with it, so I'm going to vote yes.
What was your vote?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item H.
Item H is an appeal of a conditional use permit review, 11 dash 12 for Laurel Williams. This is to review a single wide mobile home being used as a temporary residence while constructing a single-family residence. Planning Commission had recommended to revoke this C U P and the matter be turned over to the state's attorney's office for legal action. The applicant has requested to appeal this decision and a letter is in your packet as to why he feels he would like to keep this. This item is a C U P to allow for the residence to remain on the property as a temporary residence while he builds a stick-built home. Part of the conditions were is that he start building this home within two weeks. He never came in. He also was required to get a building permit and a variance to allow for that existing single-wide home to be on the property. And those were supposed to happen within two weeks of the applicant getting approval of the C U P, which was over a year ago. So the applicant never came in, never got those, that variance, never got a building permit for that single-wide. We attempted to contact him. You can see there's a letter attached with us trying to get ahold of him. We never heard of any response. Went to Planning Commission and that's, with that in mind, they actually, they recommended that it be revoked and be turned over to the state's attorney's office. It was after that, the applicant got ahold of our office and wrote this letter of appeal as to why he wasn't moving ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did he explain why he had not responded to the previous communications from your office and from his-
I'm not aware of that as to why he didn't get ahold of us.
Mr. Chair, Dan, the applicant isn't here?
Nope, I believe not.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move that we uphold the original decision of revoking the C U P and turning it over to the state's attorney's office.
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
But what happens if, if we vote no on this and uphold the appeal, reverse their decision? Is he back yet? Then where's, where's he at?
Well, he'd still be required to get the variance and still required to get a building permit. And we'd probably-
Time-wise would be-
He's supposed to do it in, you know, two weeks after the initial approval. He never did that, so.
So he didn't meet the criteria-
No, he did not. He did not meet the criteria.
So if we think conditional use permits, which we've had a long discussion about it just before, before this, if we think conditional use permits have any teeth and if people don't follow the, the rules and we continue giving them the conditional use permit anyway, it, it really makes a joke out of the conditional use permit process. So I'm going to support the motion to uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation to rescind this conditional-
rescind this conditional use permit.
Just a little footnote to Commissioner Holloway's comments, if the criteria is wrong, then change it.
If, if criteria...
Not, not now, but, but my point is, we should always be conscious of, of the possible need for changing an ordinance.
Oh, absolutely. I'm, I'm in favor of that.
So...
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yep.
But I just think if we're going to have rules, then we need to follow the rules.
Sure, sure. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Item A, and I think Commissioner Davis is on deck.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I attended the meeting last week up in Hill, near Keystone, over the new mining company that's trying to go into the Keystone area. And up until I went to that meeting, I thought that all of this was just within the boundaries of the city of Keystone. But I find out that that's not the case, and that there is some of this mining area outside that's in Pendleton County. There's not a lot of conversation about this, there's not a lot of explaining the facts of what's going on with this mining application. So I've talked to Dan a little bit about it. Dan talked to Lawrence County, Lawrence County sent us a copy of their new ordinance they're proposing. But I got to sneak in that right now, the mining company wants to do test core drilling. And then they want to lease part of a city shop in Keystone to do their examinations of the test core. And there were no questions ever answered about how they're going to try to develop these tests and these core drillings, whether they're going to use just a water bath to try to mine out the gold, whether they're going to use cyanide, whether they're going to use mercury, what they're going to do, and they, and no one has said what they're going to do with the tailings of some of these test core, whether they're going to just flush them down the drain, or where they're going. But it's my understanding that there's problems with water pollution in that Keystone area from some of the mining that's gone on there in the past. And I thought that we should maybe get ahead of the curve here and figure out what we're going to do about allowing mining applications in Pendleton County outside of municipality. And, Dan, I'm going to leave it to you. You, you've talked to the gal, or the people in Lawrence County, and kind of what they, what our law made, our resolution means that we have on the books right now, and it seems to me that basically what we're covering is something that we think we might have, have the ability to enforce under was a construction permit. Well, my answer to that was, I didn't think they were constructing anything, they're digging holes in the ground and mining, taking, taking things out, so that's not construction. So I'm, I'm just wondering what their attorneys are going to say when we try to enforce our actions under a construction ruling.
Our current ordinance is actually only one paragraph long in regards to actual mining permit. We do have a construction permit application that is in regards to stormwater pollution protection, and that does address runoff and that type of thing. I did check with DNR in regards to this particular mining, and they do have an application to the state in regards to just doing the test core samples, just to see what they have out there. They also indicated that they have not submitted an actual mining permit at this time. DNR does require them to submit a pretty extensive application to DNR. They're the ones that do the bonding, they do all that type of thing right now through DNR. I also found out through Lawrence County that we cannot regulate, even if they mine within, on the Black Hills National Forest, we cannot require anything, it's just through the Black Hills National Forest and through DNR. And also, if we do amend our zoning ordinance in regards to mining permits, that if the state already has a bond in place to do reclamation and that type of thing, that we cannot bond in addition to that. They are the ones that would be holding the bond. We can bond for other things that the state does not do. But if we want to, I do have a copy of Lawrence County's mining permit, it is pretty extensive, covers a lot of different things. We could look at amending our zoning ordinance to address some of those concerns we might have and, and use theirs as an example.
Mr. Chair, I would like to see that ordinance before I make a decision on it, on whether, I mean, I'd like to see what direction they were.
I can certainly get you a copy of their, their ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Something that slipped my mind in there, that they, they, and I want to say they, talking about Keystone, apparently their town board contacted DNR and asked them about how this was progressing through the state, what was becoming, going to become of it, so on, so, so forth. And DNR apparently told them, eh, this is too early in the game, we're not going to answer any of those questions, we don't know, we don't have things to say about that, we're not, we're not far enough down the road with this to make a determination. Now, whether that's exactly right or not, I'm not 100% sure. But that's what it sounded like at the meeting the other night up in Keystone with their town board.
I, I did talk to DNR myself, and they've indicated that they currently have their application to do those core samples, but that's it. And if they're going to do any further actual, actual mining, they do have to submit an application to DNR, which is, I guess, reviewed quite extensively by them. But they have not done that.
We can remember the one up south of Lead that, a few years ago, that was allowed to be mined by the state of South Dakota, and that, if I remember right, it wound up costing us like $25 million in cleanup fees after they pulled out. So I think that's something we have to worry about.
Anything further on this issue? At this point, there's no action to be taken, as I understand it. And, thank you, Dan.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to have Dan give the, get a copy of all of that to the board members and from Lawrence County, and have them read it, and maybe put it back on the agenda for the discussion.
Commissioner Troutman?
I did go to the healthcare trust board, I kind of filled in for Dawn last week, and they are really trying to come up with some cost savings, and they're trying to determine what, what the county does to move forward to promote health, good health among the employees. And it's a pretty extensive conversation, it's a good conversation to have now, and so I, I know there was some concern about all of that, but I believe that they are taking seriously any comments that we made as commissioner, and they're really trying to come up with good ideas to help minimize costs. So I, I wanted to pass that on. I don't know, I went to some other meetings, but that was the one that I wanted to report back on.
Thanks for covering that for me. I don't have anything, thanks.
Yeah, last week, I went to Board of Directors meeting in Pierre of the association. We looked at the resolutions that we passed at the Black Hills Association. The pine beetle one got switched really from a, a resolution to a policy of the, of the association, and that, that's going to go in front of the convention next month, but that's a given. So they were all, you know, not much you can say in opposition to fighting pine beetles. The TIF resolution was passed on to the convention just as it was. And there's, there's a couple of eastern counties, mainly Brookings, that are having serious problems with them. So they all agreed, although not a lot of them have tax incremental financing districts in their counties, they all are appreciative of the problems we're having and believe that something should be done about it. Last one was the fireworks one, which was amended immensely, obviously.
Immensely.
What they did, what they did basically was, every county, which surprised me, every county wanted the right to do it, and they said, let's just make it short and sweet that every county in the state of South Dakota has the authority to, or the county commissions has the authority to ban the sale, or the use of fireworks, period. That was it. And they all wanted that authority. So that's going to go in front of the convention just like that.
Mr. Davis?
So I thought it was, we were kind of successful, actually. So, and it has to pass the convention, of course, but once they go there with a favorable recommendation, that helps a lot, so.
You mean to tell me that I may be hung on to buy lunch for the county commissioners, including one of the members of the press?
Why?
Hold on, if you remember, I said, if we get this by them, I'll do that.
Okay, well, when do you want to do that?
I want to, I want to see it get through the kind of convention, and then we'll see where it lies. The, really, the only thing I have right now is about the Central State Fair, of course, started last Friday. There was more, been more people on the grounds every day since that started. Last night, things were a little sparse, but that's kind of the way it went last year, too. And, but things are going well.
Okay, I, I've attended the weed, County Weed Board, the RC&amp;D Project Board, and the Soil Conservation District Board since our last meeting. Probably the most significant thing as it relates to continuing involvement of the county is the fact that the, the work that Scott Guffey's been doing, not only with weed and pests, but with the pine beetle deal, is moving closer to a situation where all the parties involved can collaborate and hire a coordinator. And at this point in time, that coordinator would then be attached to RC&amp;D for administrative purposes. So as that moves along, we'll see, and Nancy, you've...
I, I can give you some figures, and we're, we've got some asks out to other counties, but the decision was to start with $15,000 in seed money to hire somebody for the remainder of the year. And it's a part-time position. And, and Danny had found some money for us, for us to contribute.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, you did, you told me you could come up with $5,000. So we're, we're counting on that. Mead County had, Friday, just committed $2,500, and I'm kind of waiting to hear back from Lawrence and Custer, so.
Thank you. Next item is items from the public. Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on any subject? If not, next item is executive session, and we need a motion to move into executive session.
You'll move?
Second. Motion by Busgrude, seconded by Davis, to win to executive session. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.